Good evening, everyone. This is Lori Charlton. It's November 19th, 2024. Welcome to the quarterly meeting of the Board of Finance. I'll call the meeting to order. And Mr. Matola will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Fledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands on a nation under God into the visible liberty, justice for all.
To the members of the public who joined us through Zoom tonight. Please know you are muted and will not be heard by board members. And there will be no live public comment until called for during the meeting. We welcome public comment typically on vote matters. And so on tonight's agenda, I'll open up for comment on items seven and nine before the board begins deliberations on those items. If you're on Zoom, you can indicate now or at any time prior to those items being called via the chat function that you'd like to be heard. Please plan to limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Members of the public are always encouraged to send their comments and questions to the board writing at BOF@FairfieldCT.org. And if you do so, please remember to include your name and address as you would with live comments. All right, so we're going to jump right into the agenda and move to item three, which is to review the current status of the town's pension and OPEC funds. The backup for this item is posted online, begins on page one. The document's titled BlackRock Port Fleet Investment Report. And Mr. Tom Colmore is here to present this item to us. Welcome for being here.
Thank you very much.
Do we get it on the, do you have copy? All right, so we'll start on page three. So this is just to set the stage, is the Portland investment report. What are we, investment report as of 9:30, 24? And if we start with this town, the executive summary on slide three, you can see that the round numbers are approaching $500 billion in assets. And equities are about 50%, 30%, about 20%. And the returns, the news is good. We have one year returns of approaching 19% and in the last quarter about 5%. Moving ahead to slide four. The asset allocation, we're right in the middle of policy allocation. We've got the plan. So you can see the diamond, the lavender diamond, right where it can, might, we might want it to be right in the middle of the range. And we have liquid assets of approximately, approximately 80% and alts of 20%. Slide five. You can see the portfolio holdings for asset classes and the typical strategy of the asset class along the tank marks. A lot of detail there. Returns on slide six point out that the big number are the equity numbers for the three months. Initiation today. Except for today. The all returns are on slide seven, which are quite good. There are three typical metrics for all. Dividends per, that's the capital, total value, paid investment, that's the capital and IRR, sort of rate of return. And while some of the numbers are hard to follow, all those numbers are solid in the sense that we're getting good capital returns on investments. That's the town. I could pause there if there are any questions. Move on.
Questions from the boards?
Is it just a quick one on the, on the funds? Can you remind us, are those typically ten year close funds usually that what these are?
The alternative fund? They're initiated annually, you see vintage years, that's when they're conceived.
Yeah.
Ten year sounds about right to me, I'm not an expert for that.
And then the, the one that Lexington Middle Market Fund. It shows a 2018 vintage year and it shows an IRR of zero. Is that? Do you have any?
You know, the math that this gave me, to be honest, the total value of one and a half times. Yeah, I can't explain that, sorry.
Okay, maybe just let us know on that one? All right, thank you.
How are you?
Good, how are you? See you.
So within this portfolio holdings per class, do you try to have, have, say, all of these liquid portfolio counts? Do you have one when? Do you try to have them each be in a certain range? Or they're just different vehicles that we use? And we just look at it based on, you know, combined or like what it is for that class?
Well, let me just give you an example. So US equities.
Yes.
You see the Russell 3000, which is a, a broad index of relatively small companies. Then you see the total market return. If you, this is on the holding slide, so slide five.
Yes.
You'll see the sum of the 30% for US equities equals a 25, 23.5%, 6.9%. I want to make sure I answer your question, Jim.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Some of those two would be our OCIO, that is our, I suppose, CIOs. Need to kind of execute on that.
Understood. Okay.
Those are the vehicles.
So those two make up that? Okay, okay. That answered my question. What the difference?
I was hoping I would. Wasn't sure though.
So in general, it was a good quarter.
Yes. News is good. You'll, you'll see, actually, they're, they'll remain positive. They're not quite as positive as they have been.
Yeah.
Since the last time I was here, yes.
Since the last time you were here.
Okay. Now that I'm back, I hope the portfolio returns will increase again.
I know it's a crystal ball, but do you see any headwinds that we're going to be hitting?
I'll get to the outlook in a section.
Any other questions from the board on the town side?
I could hear the question on the, the IRR, and I'm actually very curious.
Okay.
So moving on to OPEC. The waiting a bit more for equities, as you'd expect given the recent consultation we just had here. Results are, are good. You'll see 23% almost on the nose for the one year return and the order return of pushing 6%. And good. Either you go to slide 10. Of the allocation of the actuals well witnesses and policy range. You have the lavender diamond within the band. And portfolio holdings are on slide 11. This is very similar to the last slide. If you have any question on the last slide, probably respond to. Then alts on slide 13, these are your terms on alts again, I think you're using that zero and IRR. Not recurring, but. You see again, DPI, total value of paid in capital and IRR. Again, these are, these, well, DPI not necessarily a good return. We can't tell them just that. Total return, some of the DPI and the residual. And then the IRRs are. Okay, now to Walsh's question. This is the BlackRock outlook, starting on the asset performance. You can see the diamonds for the year to date. The diamonds are generally above the fans. So you'll deduce from that that the quarterly returns are down a bit, oh, across the board almost. The nine month return. Yes, the nine month return, but they're still. And there's a little bit of ancient history at this point on slide 16. The Fed cut rates by 50% and members that, Fed cut rates 25 bips earlier this month. But just going from this slide, you can see the Fed is projecting as of 9:30, so that includes 150 basis points of cuts by by 26. And the point here is the Fed is not reacting to a stalling economy, which is often the case. Funds are, that funds, by the way, are overnight interbank rates. But restrictive real rates, in other words, you have nominal rates and then you have inflation as part of nominal rates and inflation is dropping, therefore nominal, real rates of interest are increasing. So the Fed is addressing that, the increase in real interest rates. Moving to slide 17. You see labor supply is decreasing, leading to a bit of payroll growth is positive but slowing. On slide 18, you can see inflation is decelerating, growth is accelerating. On the left hand graph on slide 18, we'll see the range of labor, just the guys who roll and core services and headline CPI, which includes energy and food. The gag is that economists apparently don't eat or drive because they often talk about core inflation, not headline inflation. Both those numbers, that's supposed to be funny, by the way. Both those numbers are above zero and then the services you can see is more than zero. Growth is expected to remain positive but lower 25. That's for a Reuters economist poll. Then BlackRock asks the rhetorical question of the question, what does economy do or what is the market? What do the markets do actually? When the Fed pivots and the answer is things are improving. So you can see there that BlackRock is clearly predicting that the market is well. Then on slide 20. BlackRock, US large cap, yes. And the mix, which is a common, commonly cited measure of volatility is down quite a bit from, it looks like August. I'm curious to know what this election has done to the mix, but I understand that I'm getting used to it. eventual election. The prediction here, again, back in November, September rather, so obviously it's proven true since this is a little bit stale at this point, that the SOP would do well. So yes, the SOP has done well. Then on slide 22, US Treasuries yields on the rise of the distinguished between Fed funds, which are overnight rates and treasuries, which are two, 30 year rates. See that BlackRock is saying that the yield curve has steepened, but it's not, I'll add parenthetically, it's not all that steep. It's roughly 4%. 30 years. Yes, it is steep, incredibly steep. Slide 23 says simply that lenders are lending to treasury returns that is for high yield and investment greater. Then on slide 24, you can see by the tone of the green that I think day 24 and then three is quite good. What the Fed, you know, the market said, our currency is one in red at the bottom. Otherwise, returns are not quite good. Which drives a lot of so pause then, there are very more questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions from the board? Nobody has any questions when you have 20% returns, I guess.
I, I'm assuming that when the, when the inevitable bad returns recur, that we'll have lots of questions.
Why aren't you getting us 30%?
Well, I'm going to ask BlackRock the same question because they already agreed. Thank you. I'll pass along that.
Yeah, I'm curious, I don't, oh, sorry, Jim, do you have a question?
Yeah, so I actually like this BlackRock report a lot. Got it to pass and there's a lot more information. Kind of easier to read, but pension board has a decision date, right? To come up with about whether you're going to be changing our discount rate? Yes. What's that? Whatever, because I know we got it for.
The element's doing experience study, which I'm at in January, so it's going to factor into it. I'm not sure exactly when, but that sounds right.
All right. I thought it was supposed to be earlier than, than February, December, January, February, but maybe you're waiting for your experience study to get back. So maybe that's changing the, the timing of that. Would somebody be able to get to our chairwoman, like what your anticipation is? We don't need it right away, but it'd be nice to know by January, when you think that's going to be, that when budgeting and stuff like that, because it's going to be January, February, March, about when you guys are going to make a decision about that. Obviously, the administration, I'm sure, is going to be asking the same questions as they develop their budget. I'll need it sooner. So, so if you guys could just give us, give, obviously, the first selectmen and our chairwoman some type of estimate on when you think that will be.
I'll pass along.
I appreciate it. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you. I was going to say, I'm curious what this, what these kind of returns do to our funded status on, on plans.
Yes. Push us up to find out. The natural.
Yeah, and 20% increase in the portfolio that might get us.
You'd think so, but I think
it gets amortized.
You think that happens and then they, you know, weighted average over like five years, something like that. Doesn't really move the needle as fast.
They don't, they, they bleed it in or they amortize it in for the ADAC calculation. But for the, the, kind of the gap calculation and the actual funded status based on the market rate, I feel like that might get us to a fully funded status on, on the pension plan anyway, so interesting. All right. If there's no other questions, thank you, Mr. Colmore, appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. We will move on to item four to review the BOE fiscal 25 first quarter financial update. The backup for this item is posted online and it begins on page 27. So welcome, Mr. Peterson, Testani, Ms. Gordius, thanks for being here with us.
Mr. Parker did ask me to copy his people.
Thank you. I think everyone had this in the, in the back, this is just your printed version.
Unless you'd act. I don't need that good, I'm here.
No. Okay, so first, thank you for being here to present the first quarter results. We're starting fiscal 2425 in a stable position with a small projected gap of about $130,000. We need to go about reflective of budget pressures. It's early in the year, so we're approaching the forecast conservatively and we're keeping close eye on areas of concern. So there is a concern, the key budget pressures, and they'll be repeated in our, our budget discussions with the Board of Ed and ultimately with the Board of Finance are the cost of substitutes. We spoke about it last year and is rising. Our substitute expenses last year were about 2.2 million and this year we're predicting 2.4 million. Students are entitled to the time off and they're, they're taking it. Again, you know, we initially had thought that might be a blip post COVID and then also one additional year post COVID, but that, that trend is continuing. We're seeing a lot of short term and long term absences. So that's driving the minor projected gap in personnel. Also, our special education tour, the outplacement costs and services like tutoring, speech and language, OT and PT, so occupational therapy, physical therapy, any IEP related support services. Just we've seen a trend in state and in kind of Fairfield. These are, it's arising, the costs are rising. Tuitions have actually, historically, they were giving us about three and a half percent increase year over year on tuition. This year we saw on average about 5%. We were able to negotiate down because we have good relationships with the providers, but that's not happening. One of the things that legislatively we're looking at at the state level is also, and we asked for folks to advocate for this, is sort of some sort of universal look at the cost of tuitions because districts will pay different amounts. One thing that would help at Fairfield would be if some of that, those costs were normalized across the state so that we can have a great, better expectation of what the tuition cost will be. So that gap in the special education line for tuitions and for other special education services about, you know, even for that. It also reflects what we've been talking about, a loss in excess again, we need some legislation that impacted districts that higher angelic branding, banking, which Fairfield was, to cap us at a 60% reimbursement where in the past we had seen as much as 80% reimbursement of costs in excess of the normal costs of, average cost of students. Will have part of our budget conversation as well. But that's about $304,000 gap in that special education. And then the pension, you know, the town's pension contribution came in higher than budgeted. We had this conversation during the budget last year. We saw an average reduction of 52% over five years. We budgeted a reduction of 1.4%, but it actually wasn't even just due to that new actuarial assessment. And we'll be looking at that this year so that we make sure that we, really this year. Personnel budget, again, the minor gap of $9,000 was driven in these studios, most of the vacancies that we had at the start of the year, so in 2021. It's September 30th, so for us, because we're on a two week lag with our pay, you know, we had a few vacancies at that point in time and, and we've since, so we had projected that. So we're on trend there. And you'd see that on, I guess, my page four, which is, I don't know what page goes in your backup materials, but it's the one called summary by Major Dust, basically. Balances as of 9:30, 24 year to date actuals. And so that's that line. The personnel gap line of 9 to 11. And where you see the projected additional Oh, I'm sorry, I'm saying this, line 11.
Line 11.
All the way to the right, all the way to the right, I apologize.
Okay.
So that gap is a summary of all the things that are happening in those lines. When you see a gap of negative 585 in the salary line, it's not actually a gap of negative 585. It's offset by the monies held in the wage and benefit reserve. So our projection, we transfer those monies when the settlements happen, but we project them in the so the true gap is that substitute line. You know, you see a small gap in summer school. We had, we talked about this before, we had a lot more enrollment percentage, percentage enrollment, higher percentage enrollment in our summer program that last year, which shows in this year's budget, because it happens in July. So let's see. Substitute costs, okay, we mentioned that health insurance, we have a small surplus thanks to lower than expected enrollment, but this will likely normalize as our hiring completes. So folks enroll, have a month of data hire. So our projected amount includes an assumption that we'll have an average uptake that happens in our October timeframe. So we'll continue to monitor that as we go along. The school expenses, that supplies and extracurriculars, they'll be fully utilized. We do work with the schools to make sure they have what they need and they usually spend out that full amount. You see a small savings there associated with copier services. We're really excited that it was only out a new, well, we rolled out a new print management. And we're also, so we're seeing some savings in some of that. And potentially we're just going to talk to you in the budget about eliminating all desktop services, which is going to yield additional savings in paper and also all these costs for printing in general. So we're excited about that. Transportation, we're optimizing routes and running fewer buses due to driver shortages, which could yield additional savings. Right now, we're showing many savings because of that. Again, it's early in the year, so we'll see that trend out as we go throughout the year. Exits rooms, our new IT directors reviewing contracts and has been finding efficiencies across the board. So he's already shown positive balances and we look forward to discussing other changes in the budget process that he's put into place. Working directly with Mike and coming across some efficiencies that will yield better value for the district as well. Utilities, working with the town, working with David Angeles, Papa George. With a team that has been based on a logistic contract. And we're happy to say that we're hopeful that we'll continue to see saving if we did see savings in the first three months. And so right now we're holding it flat as though the total projected budget affords the contract. But we'll see. The capital budget, 80% of our $1.4 million capital allocation, which is mostly for technology, is already spent or encumbered. So it's planned for and the remainder will be likely by quarter seven. Way. So closing, while we're seeing some early challenges, we're confident in our ability to close the gap by year end through careful cost management. We're monitoring impact areas close and we'll keep the boards updated throughout the year. And then we're also happy to address any specifics or provide any
Thank you, Courtney, for the summary. Questions from the board? Mr. Myers?
Line 10, I, I maybe I missed this. About a bit later, but some, the weight benefit, like a projected 850,000.
Sure, yeah, so the wage and benefit reserve is used to offset the costs up above. So the wage and benefit reserve is where we park our unsettled contracts. So as they settle, we move them into the set line. And the reason being, we wouldn't want to show the percentage that we're assuming before the contract negotiations come into place. So that would include, for example, our educators, but it hasn't been yet. I believe the administrators for this year. There's two, one other group that's in there. Secretaries was already transferred. We received, yeah, especially trainers as well.
And you did say that your terms of filling your open teacher positions, which was a bigger deal these years, as the new contract and sort of.
Yes.
Kind of salary helped fill those.
Helped dramatically, yes. We had fewer. Teachers change districts. I think that we're, we obviously, with the incentive of notifying with earlier retirement date, small monetary sick day payouts, we haven't, were able to project a little bit sooner what our retirements are for next year. But overwhelmingly, the teacher contract has helped in retention of staffing of high-quality teachers. We didn't see the exodus that we saw. And the musical chairs that a lot of districts have seats, it's called.
Well, no, but how was it done with recruiting of new teachers and especially entry-level teachers?
Well.
Went up there.
We didn't, we didn't have a ton of vacancies. There still are the shortage areas that are hard to fill with entry-level folks. So, in those particular areas, though, we did find, now, we were looking for a physics teacher, which is extremely difficult to find. We were able to recruit one from another district. So, we're not seeing the offset in savings, so to speak. But we have a commitment with knowing of the early retirements now to maximize our investment in our teacher residency program, let's say, for our university, to make sure now, as we have top-of-the-scale teachers retire, we can fill them with step-one, so to speak, teachers that are currently with us working through the residency program. So, we'll be able to see then the savings in the exodus to the higher, as long as certifications match up properly. I also want to stress one thing that Courtney did mention. It's a hot topic around the state. We actually, a small group was having a meeting on Thursday with the governor about the out-of-control costs that are being charged to districts from these private out-of-district placements. There is no regulation on what they can charge, and we're all feeling the effects as they continue to rise in their tuition costs and mercy of them because they already have our students. So, that is a hot topic that is being felt across the state in terms of how much they are increasing their costs year-over-year.
Yeah, Mr. Walsh.
Who is our, who is the member that was assigned to the administrative contract?
Mr. Matola.
Great job, by the way.
I'd say we permanently put him on that. For as long as he serves there. Where do we stand in that process?
The contract tentative agreement has been reached. The union has ratified, and it will be going to the Board of Education for approval, most likely first meeting in December.
Summarizer, you.
It has to come before the board first.
All right. In regards to, how many? How many positions did we budget for retirements? And how many retirements came in?
Last year, we budgeted for nine.
Nineteen or nine?
Yeah, nineteen. And I believe that. I don't remember how many came in, so I have to get back to you.
Was close. It was plus or minus one or two.
If you just get back with the five effects of that. This would be. It took her chairwoman to share that with.
Yeah, it finally got closer because I know the previous two years, it was upwards if it was around forty, forty-two, but it came back down to a normal level. So, yeah, we'll get that through the chair to you.
You thought that that was going to happen because so many people had retired.
Yeah, we have like a regression analysis that we had been doing, and the regression broke for those two years, but then they were not enough. Oh, no.
The age plays a huge part in this, so. For the Teacher Retirement Board, which includes everyone that is certified, if you're not at age sixty, there's a penalty, or thirty-five years, there's a penalty to take your. So, state of births will drive a lot of, some of the assumptions in predicting who's going to retire or not. And as of today, because we have the incentive that teachers can get a small buyout on their sick days by November first, if they notified us, we have thirteen that have indicated they will retire. Not necessarily done deal until they actually file the paperwork with the Teacher Retirement Board sometime in the spring.
And then, could you update us on? In regards to the funding we get from special education, you file certain applications by a certain date, right? What's that, I mean, for us to know that?
So, our.
I think there's a two-stage.
Two stages for the excess cost, yeah. So, we submit our total costs and for the pupils that are eligible for excess cost reimbursement on, I believe, December first, and then there's a true-up in March, so that's your, or no, this is the true-up for last, and then in March, it's the preliminary for the current year, then we true-up again in the fall and December. So, we're looking at slightly less revenue than last year, but a little more than we were expecting. We haven't finalized it yet, so. But again, it's dropping because our percentage reimbursement, so even if our gross expenses go up, which they are, the overall percentage that we're getting reimbursed by the state has gone down, and there's a cap on it. Sometimes, if they have an appropriation that exceeds that amount, once they distribute it amongst the whole state, they'll give us an additional percentage amount back, and we won't know that until that fall. So, that gives us a challenge.
So, one would be a good time to get an update from you.
So, during the budget process, we'll update, yeah, yep, and/or even at the Q two meeting, but I think the budget process will be for, for the Board of Finance at the second quarter, Board of Ed, during the budget process.
And when you talked about substitute costs, they're not very often. A little bit off, hundred and nine thousand dollar. You said something about teachers are permitted. What time are you talking about? Are they allowed to take vacations in the?
No.
Yeah, that's what I didn't think, so I confused that by.
So, we do, we do have quite a bit of absences, daily absences and long-term absences. Long-term absences related to maternity leave, FMLA, so to speak, and then the daily occurrences. And we are trying to rein in, had another discussion actually today with the teachers' union on ways that we could work together in order to try to bring that number down. So, I think Courtney says they are entitled to the time. Every year, they're given an allotment of sick days and personal days. They lose the personal days if they don't use them. They obviously will use their personal time as they should. But the sick days, we are just seeing a lot of occurrences across the district, not only from teachers, but also other bargaining units as well.
Well, on the longer term, they, the. Attorney leaves and stuff like that. Do they collect, does the state collect from them that new tax? And then they get their, their payments for that through the state, which is basically half-paid.
We're exempt from that as a municipal.
Okay, I just want, I thought you might be, but I just wanted to.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we don't, we don't deduct that. I think all municipal are exempt.
All municipal employees?
Or, or, and from having to take that deduction on behalf.
And therefore, the municipalities, they don't want to have to pay the full amount.
Sure, well, that's an interesting question. We, not directly, yes, indirectly, yes, because we don't pay anything to, so that the people that don't pay into it are not entitled to that state children to get reimbursed, right? Like, if you don't pay into it, you don't get the money back. But we do have, I guess, municipalities do have sick leave that you bank enroll, which is like a de facto sort of short-term, you know, policy.
It's just a different program.
It's, it's a different program, yeah.
All right. Trying to get to my questions, Madam Chair, which I don't. Well, I think this conversation. And the pension costs, why were they off? Why, why, why did we not hit the numbers in town, not giving you the proper numbers in advance? Or how, how, how are we missing that?
Well, so. So, normally, we would get, have gotten it earlier, I think, because Millman was new and, you know, working through a lot of data that they're dealing with in, I think, a better way, maybe than the predecessor was dealing with. We projected because we had seen just a broad trend of it going down by, I think, by five point seven over five years. We conservatively, by one point four percent year-over-year, without having the data from the town, it actually came in at a twelve point two percent. We have the backup, the situation was the liability and the. One of the issues being that our pair educators were being compensated much more greatly than they had in the past because of that memorandum of fact, but other reasons too, because I think they were doing potentially a better job with actuarial. With the real cost of.
I remember you talking about this. Didn't think it was fair, really. We have, or you worked with the town and elements about, you're going to get this this year so we can deal with more accurate.
Yeah.
Something, they. An actuarial number on you, and they now.
Yeah, so we meet with them regularly, I think every week, sort of once a month. So, I will get them to session, and I'm hopeful that we'll have conversations with them about the projection if they're not able to get me the real number in time. But, yeah, we do work closely with Millman, with Megan Brandt in the town as well.
And I just have two other follow-up questions that I just hope they'll be fast. One is on the reduced amount of sixty-eight percent. Closer to eighty percent. You kind of said that really fast, so I'm trying to figure out why we're getting penalized on that.
The excess cost.
Yeah, the excess, why are we getting penalized?
So.
Everybody getting penalized in the entire state, or is it?
There's a, there's a fixed dollar amount that's allocated by the state.
Yeah.
So, based on that amount, it gets chopped up.
Okay.
So.
So, are we getting our proper percentage? It's just a lower amount of money?
Correct. Well, the percentage is adjusted based on the amount of money so that it's proportionate.
And because we're a wealthier.
We're a wealthier town, we are going to be penalized more than town that has less means.
They tiered it out recently, so since we're in the top tier, we get sixty-eight and exactly seventy-two. But if they have more, they will give more in a proportionate share way.
My last question is on the transportation. You told us why you've had less bus drivers, said things, and why we've actually had positive numbers on that because you have not been able to hire enough bus drivers to do all the runs, say, you with the transportation director, whoever that is, lots, lots. That situation getting better, worse, the same, it seems like a number of years have gone by, and it don't feel like there's been any change in this.
So, we've been having some struggles, not as many, but they're isolated to certain schools, certain times, after-school charters for athletics. I met, Angeles and I met with the leadership of the bus company at my request a week and a half ago. Some of it is just trying to, on, on some of the charters and the after-school things when it comes to athletics, is to be a little more just proactive in communicating the needs that we have, but also some of the things are unpredictable. It's also, we have some stress points with the other schools, Notre Dame, Field Prep, the non-public schools that are causing some of the stresses as well. They have assured us that they're going to bring on more drivers in the coming weeks. They have them in the pipeline. But again, that's provided they don't lose any drivers, so they could add three and lose three the week after, so.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Other questions from the board?
I just had one question. I was also curious about the transportation. So, when, when there's no bus drivers, it's just the event doesn't happen? What, what happens when there's no?
For example, if we have to double up teams that are traveling, so softball and freshman baseball may get on the same bus, or they're going to swing by one school and grab another. I mean, it's, it was difficult, especially in the spring, or so, because teams are going to tuxes, they're going here, they're going there, as opposed to during the winter season when basketball's right in the gymnasium, and they can alter some of the practice schedules. What's, what's difficult is when they have to then, you know, get a morning run and then go to another, you know, because of the tiers, that makes it more complicated. Pulling drivers, what they'll do is from different other places, as they say, but we're in a tough spot simply because, for some reason, our districts, they don't pay as well. Same company in other districts, so, and that has nothing to do with us. We've tried to rectify that.
But it's been like a perennial problem, famous problem last, last year, right? Last year?
It's a perennial problem for a lot of districts, transportation, and we're going out to bid. So, who knows? Maybe we'll find a different provider that may be able to fill our needs a little bit better.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Okay, thank you. We're going to move into item five. Just gonna grab my. I, I understand why we're saving money on utilities costs here, actually. Unless it's just me, it is like subs zero.
That's the landlord, it's not us.
Okay. So, item five, to discuss the status of the Dwight ECC building project, including follow-up questions on BOE responses to BOF questions. So, the backup for this item was posted online, starting on page one oh five, and it was previously mailed to board members. These are the responses that were provided to, on this board's questions about the Dwight project after the capital planning summit in late September. As everyone will recall from our last meeting, several of the questions that we had relating to the financial impact of the project and its alternatives are going to be addressed through a more comprehensive facility analysis, and we approved up to a million dollars in funding at our last meeting for the town to get that analysis completed. However, there are other responses to our questions that stand on their own, and they're laid out in this document, and this is an opportunity for board members to get any clarification on those responses, if they wish, and also an opportunity for the town to update us on the status of the facilities analysis that we threw the funding for last. So, I will just go straight into Q and A and ask, if any board members have, well, I have a couple myself. I did reach out. I didn't hear back from anyone specifically, but does anyone have questions, follow-up questions on this information that was provided to us? Mr. Matola.
These pages aren't numbered, but on page. About four or five pages in the, the part that talks about Dwight School and CC.
Table, yeah.
Tables, it says variations.
Yeah, so. I understand the Dwight new bill, no ECC. CC addition to Dwight. What's the difference between the very bottom, where it says new Dwight with ECC with higher reimbursement rate? What's the difference between that and ECC addition to Dwight? Because you get a higher re, why would you get a higher reimbursement rate? Isn't that the same thing? Am I missing something there?
Right, so any. Any ECC or any preschool that's attached to a, an elementary school will garner a higher reimbursement rate on the preschool component of the building. That's, obviously, to me, I read that as we are headed in a direction of possibly a universal preschool. That's obviously, to me, I read that as we are headed in a direction of possibly a universal preschool. And when towns are considering construction projects of elementary schools, they're encouraging them to add more preschool space onto those buildings in order to accommodate what's ahead. Again, I think it's their way of giving that us a lens into the future. I think if there wasn't challenges for some of the less fortunate districts across the state, this might have been done sooner. There's been a lot of push, I was on a call with our legislative committee at CAPS yesterday. And everyone's pushing for this next session, if not for next year, for in the very near future, a hard date and to remove the waiver for parents of children born between September first and December thirty first, which is currently in place with the new legislation that parents have an opportunity to waive through some sort of assessment to allow their kids to take to move on to kindergarten if they so choose. But that is causing a lot of unknowns for every district. At the same time, there's been a lot of advocacy for some of the poorer districts across the state that they don't have the capacity to provide preschool for those children in that September one to December thirty one timeframe. And especially preschool that is going to encompass a full day program for working parents.
So what, I guess that's, thank you for answering that, but what's the reason why there's in this chart, there's a difference between the percentage of reimbursement? New Dwight plus ECC. So then you have new Dwight with CC with higher reimbursement rate. Is that just, where's the higher reimbursement rate come from? Which one is more likely accurate, if you know? Because one, you're getting thirteen million and change reimbursement, the other sixteen.
I mean, if you're looking for the specific, is the forty one point oh seven that in that third column is different? Versus the, you know, the normal twenty six percent?
Yeah, yeah, so what accounts for that, though? Was forty one point oh seven or thirty one point oh seven?
Were you just projecting what we might be able to get? Yeah.
Good, yes.
Okay, that's all I want, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, because.
We know that reimbursement rates have changed and they've changed, and this is, this is.
That's just showing us we could get this. Okay, that's all I want.
Can I follow up on that while we're on this table? So the very first line, it talked about the distinct white renovation at the twenty six percent. I assume this is a reimbursement rate that's not a higher risk, it does not. But then when I look at the Dwight new build, no ECC, it's not at twenty six percent, it's at sixteen percent. Why is that ten percent lower? In both instances, they don't include an ECC, so why wouldn't it still?
Higher reimbursement for a reno as new as opposed to a new build.
Okay, and then same thing, once the ECC is added, it goes up to the thirty one percent, right?
On the ECC.
Yeah, on the ECC component, and then. Understood, okay. That all tracks.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. On the on the enrollment projections. Ms. Leclair, you can jump in here, I know you have that question on the enrollment. So the original question asked for enrollment projections for the ECC. And we didn't get projections, we got a trend, presumably because we didn't, you know, we didn't ask SLAM for those, or we don't have that data available, so we have a trend. I guess what I was trying to understand is can you connect the dots? And help us understand what this data means. So we have these enrollment trends here, then we have a capital plan that has this building where that anticipates a three ECC site. Can you help the board understand how that current ECC plan with the three sites, assuming that it all goes forward as it is in the capital plan with a piece of Dwight, a piece of Jennings, and keeping Ward? How does that fit with these enrollment projections and how much room does it allow for growth? I think that, you know, part of the reason for the question, Ms. Leclair jumped in here if I got this wrong, but I think what the board is trying to understand is, you know, how are we considering future enrollments? You know, we're looking at that ECC and, you know, we don't want to find ourselves in a situation where we go forth with this plan for three sites, and then all of a sudden, we've got universal pre K, and we, the minute we get done, we find ourselves short, et cetera. So can you just help put that together for us?
I think it's a great question. So projections are difficult based on, right now, the unknowns of how many parents would opt to send their children onto kindergarten through the waiver process and the assessment, and those that will keep those children back in preschool for the extra year. The more kids that remain back is going to impact our spacing needs for ECC, because we cannot provide those kids that traditionally went on to kindergarten with a half day program. We have to provide them, we'd be irresponsible not to provide them with a full day program. So what that's doing is creating more need for classrooms for full day programming, as opposed to now, or where, or prior to this year, where our preschools were half day programs. So you can service two groups of children with one room. So as we move into the possibility of a universal preschool and a hard date of September first, which pretty sure we're going to get there sooner than later, especially as the push from every district in the state is going to be lobbying for that. There's going to be a need for more full day programs for preschool, which is going to mean more space.
So, and let me just try and understand what you're saying, so I, and I get that, and I understand there's a number of uncertainties, but is there a possibility that this three site ECC plan is going to prove to be inadequate based on what you just said?
That's a tough question to answer.
Let me, no, let me step back for a minute. How does, how does the, with today? How full would these, if we had the three sites today as planned, how full would they be based on current enrollment? What would the capacity be at today? Or say by the end of the year, I know, I know the numbers increased throughout the year, but let's say you're at the P.
It would be adequate because we currently have a five, a five, and a two. We have the classrooms at Straffield, at Ward, and two classrooms at Holland Hill, which is the overflow of what we, I term the four plus kids. Kids that historically would have gone out to kindergarten, but remained back because parents no longer had, they didn't choose the waiver. Now, we have a waiting list for that program. We're not obligated to fill that waiting list with a full day program because no mandate for that. But if we got there to the mandate, we would have more kids, which would mean it wouldn't be adequate, we would need more full day classroom space. So to your question, if the direction is to move universal pre K, yeah, we would continue to need more space, hence my expression of the possibility of a twelfth building, what we would call, to house either all pre K or to house a combination of elementary and preschool.
Okay, so how is the board, and just, and I don't want to, I'll let anyone else jump in, but was this contemplated in the long-term facilities plan, or will there be a process to start?
Well, I mean, as you know, a lot of these moving target, only so much information that we can plan off of. You know, the actual rate of incidence of special ed, three, you know, three H three and up. You know, it's dependent on a lot of things that are not kind of classic demographic factors. You know, I will say that, you know, we, this number, this three site plan, came from the administration, came from consultations with, you know, Rob Mancusi, our special ed director. We're relying on his expertise and his foresight when it comes to that, but obviously, when it comes to things like universal pre K, we don't know, and the question is, do we plan on that now? Not knowing whether that will be implemented or when it might be implemented? How, it's hard to look into that and, you know, into the crystal ball and come up with these, the plans that we came up with, the long-term facility plan. There's the facts on the ground now that I've tried to decision, but also understanding that the ECC, you know, instance rate is coming, is coming up, we're having the pre K challenges. Those are the factors that we took on board in coming up with the plan.
Okay, I mean, I'll let other board members chime in, I just, you know, the obvious concern is that we, we have a capital plan that's, whatever it is, three hundred or three hundred fifty million dollars to deal with our current buildings. And I did hear Mr. Testani make the comment during the Board of Selectmen meeting that we could be looking at the need for a twelfth elementary school within ten years, which is kind of scary, because obviously, we don't just have, you know, a bunch of acres of land to just plop a new school on, so that would mean having to add more capacity to existing buildings, which we're already planning to renovate now, so you would want to be thoughtful about how, you know, you're doing those renovations to do all this. So I just, I guess that the question gets more down to process and understanding how the board is going to be looking at these things over time and how we commit to dollars thoughtfully, knowing that, you know, there are.
I very much hear that, and, and I, you know, these are topics that have come up in our discussions. These are, these are factors that we're all aware of in a theoretical capacity.
Right.
It's hard to know at what point to assign actual dollars and actual plans to them. But these are things that we are definitely keeping an eye on as we go forward, but this is the best picture that we can give you right now with the information that we have, building in some capacity for ECC, which we know is expanding. And working within the three side model for ECC that the administration has advocated for us.
Mr. Matola.
Is universal pre K same as ECC or wouldn't be the same? Is it? Would it be? It would be.
Early childhood, yeah.
It would be, it would, if it's, universal pre K would be, if we ever had to do that, would be something akin to what we're doing with the ECC right now, right? It's not two different things.
No, so what I will say is, to your point, right now, we have twelve, twelve classrooms that are being utilized. If we had to, if they made September one the hard date, as January used to be, three more additional classrooms would have served us well.
And that's the capacity that the current plan will give us fifteen classrooms, just for everyone's.
Yeah, there's, I don't see us heading to a full day threes or a full day fours program. But that, that four plus, that, those children that historically would have went to kindergarten, I think that's where there will probably have to be some compromise if, if a hard date is going to be passed by the legislature, because a whole other year of not a full day program is a hardship for many parents across the state of Connecticut. I don't think it'll ever pass otherwise, so.
Any follow up questions on that or other questions?
I did have one comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, I did have one comment. I just wanted to thank the administration and the folks who took us through the tour of Dwight. It was eye opening for me. It, it was clear that the building is in a state where something needs to be done clearly. But it was also very clear to me that the facilities folks within the school system have done, have done an amazing job of putting Band-Aids on problems. It was from one room to the next, to the next, where they were issued and they were addressing those issues. So it was not in this state of disrepair that I expected, but that's not to say that it doesn't need to be addressed, but I just wanted to give my compliments to the facilities folks, because literally have been doing the best that they could with what they can.
It's a challenging situation, as you saw, to keep it in the condition it's in. So I'll remember, it's a sixty year old building, it's not getting any younger.
Hey, Mr. Penley? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Vitale, did you have a comment you want to speak?
So the sixty year old building, and as we've spoken about, about the needs of mechanical, needs of fresh air, speak about it for our staff and our students in those buildings, but it's also for the overall health of the building, proper ventilation in terms of humidity in the building, water on the floors, moisture in the walls, and what that potentially could lead to in terms of fungal growth or mold, whatever you would like to discuss it. And also just in terms of the ECC, you know, it's, it's hard to predict. Children some five years out, these children haven't even been born yet. I do think that having the CC attached to the elementary school does provide a little bit of swing space that if you could, if your elementary school population of school went down at a particular time and have an unexpected increase in the early childhood population, you could use some elementary classrooms. That's swing space, which I think that the state probably recognizes in increasing the reimbursement rate for early childhood classrooms that are attached to an elementary school, they're just making an investment in the district as a whole. Okay, sorry.
Mr. Penley?
Well, Ms. Vitale, right. There is this concern of the health of the building, we got an email earlier today from the PTA president at Dwight, mentioning some, some current health issues there. And it, whenever I see that, it always brings to mind this issue of, I mean, there's one of the questions in there, well, what's the alternative? Some, you know, where, where else do these kids go, right? And then that also raises the issue with me of this timeline of this project. Delaying this project. And I think in here, what they're talking about is a two, three year plan, a year of planning, two years of building. So if I, can I talk to the town about it? Because I had, I had a question about really, to what extent these answers from the Board of Ed are going to inform or not your project that you're undertaking? And for example, one of the responses this year is that Giant Steps doesn't make sense because of its location proximity to another school. So I'm, I'm, I'm not telling you what to do, but I'm just, I'm wondering how you're thinking about and how you're firm in the responses they gave. Because I think they're a little bit more fleshed out than that, than they were in the meeting.
Certainly. Pick up, I can't. So certainly something we're reviewing, a lot of these around of these answers, I think, actually were discussed when the Board of Ed and members of the administration were at their meeting, and still, the answer was to move forward in this process. I mean, fair enough on Giant Steps, except for the fact that you've got two middle schools that are right down the road from each other. You can make the same argument on numerous elementary schools. If it's an ECC space versus a, an elementary space, they're two different functions, there's no reason they can't be nearby. So I don't think, I would disagree that it knocks them completely out, but, you know, fair enough, they need to be, you know, all these things need to be evaluated. I think the biggest thing that we're attempting to do with this is start the process on, on, on the Dwight piece and kind of multi-track what you need to be moving at least forward, so it doesn't necessarily delay at, you know, at, at, at the core of the building. And then evaluate town needs or vet needs, you know, there's a number of things in potential sites to be used, so. It's a factor, and there's numerous, you know, you know, answers in here, but, 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 but our, but our, you know, I think one of the biggest things coming out of boards, and we went to the RTM last night, who, say unanimously, but pretty much all the way through, seemed to be one by one, saying how happy they were that we were moving in that direction, is that everything that's listed in here, all of these discussions, they, they, they need, you know, a, a, you know, they needed some money behind it and some additional deeper analysis before we, but, you know, you know, concretely all the boards ultimately, or what they're going to go and do. So it's a good, it's a good starting.
Yes, I mean, I'm hearing that you're, you're, you're going to take your own fresh look at it, and I have confidence in your, your ability and people in the town to do that. But I, but I would just say, and I want to say that, you know, when the superintendent is saying this isn't a bad idea, and when the Board of Ed has got the plan, people who are town elected to make. People who are town elected to make these decisions, and I think, I think there needs to be some bit of deference to them. Right? Because we've taken this now and taken this through a kind of unique process. Similarly, there's a couple of schools in here that now are on the potential list of places we could have an ECC. And I think the parents of those schools had this gone through the Board of Ed would have had an opportunity to come and give public comment. They don't have that now. Now this is going on. At the town. And this isn't anything about uh, what you guys are doing. I understand what you're doing. I voted in favor of it. It's it's, I'm glad there's some due diligence being done. But uh, there's gotta be a balance between what the Board of Ed is charged to do, both people, the people voted for. People on that board to do and with the superintendent saying, um, I don't want us to completely substitute our judgment. Or, you know, potentially um. The people with a better perspective on it.
Mister Gerber.
Yeah, with all due respect, uh, Mister Penley, uh, we're not substitute. I mean, we're working together with the Board of Ed on this, so I'm not sure. Why you got the idea that we're trying to substitute our opinions for them. I've got nothing but positive feedback from the current chair. On us moving ahead in this way, so um, and a positive feedback from the superintendent as well. So I I I disagree with that assessment. Um, and I think what this um, project does is. Allow, I mean, we may end up exactly the place where the Board of Ed wants us to be, but I would say that work. To flesh this out was not done. Okay, so I mean, if I thought it was done, then I wouldn't have brought this up, but I don't think it was done. And you know, this board holds the purse strings as as does my board. Now, you know, if you were to let them go further along. And then reject it, um, that would be worse for the timeline, in my opinion. So I, what I'm trying, I'm talking about a, um, and what we've been talking about and what you voted for was. Um, a delay um, in order to get our ducks in a row and if. This is new information, if the ECC, the Board of Ed says, no way, we don't want that, the ECC to be. At giant steps, we're not gonna force anyone to put the ECC at giant, giant steps. We thought that was an opportunity. Uh, something that we could uh, flesh out and see if it's uh, if it is an opportunity. If it turns out Board of Ed doesn't want it. We're not gonna force the Board of Ed to put an ECC there. So I'm not really, um, I don't really understand the points that you're making, honestly.
Well, I mean, it's it's, the point I'm making is that the superintendent is saying, don't put the giant steps, we don't want it there, but you guys are gonna explore it.
Well, I I just saw that for the first time. I mean, that wasn't really.
That was an elementary school.
That was an, yeah.
That's an elementary school. But but also, I mean, I think one of the problems that we've had here is, is so they went all summer. Their process and then they came to do these these decisions. And then after the fact, we get, well, the first selectmen told us we can't use this building. Well, no, I mean, that's taking modern terrorists. Sorry, standing right next to them, we were very open about what the possibilities were. So. If miscommunication, I'm not sure how, but come and ask for those things. Same with the potential on giant steps and and our flexibility on our sites. We we're we're trying here to say, everything is on the table um, at 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 some level for both, even if it. You know, has some some sacrifice to the people on the down side of the house that that might have thought that they were going to use certain spaces. If it ultimately saves a significant amount. It opens up a pathway for many more things. Uh, move forward with current plan and there's many just, you know, there's many schools in the district who. Aren't gonna get their HVAC IQ projects moving forward for a longer period of time, causing. Problem. So we are, we're, we're trying here and I, and I think, you know, to the first selectman's point, at the end of the day, if it's, if it's a. Lunch school or or ECC space and they go, well, end of story, no matter what, we're not gonna pass an ed spec that allows it to go there. Well, then then choose not to do that, but also know that that may have, again, cause need effect on other projects and what we have been trying to do. I think it has been, uh, you know, something everybody has seen in the capital plan is, you know, difficult choices are going to have to occur. We're trying to do the best we can across town, Board of Ed, WPC, et cetera, and there to 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 reduce the amount of those. You know, s- saying no or delaying out and trying to get things, you know, done in a near term fashion. Because there are a lot of things that were pushed off and done, so. holistic approach is is what we're trying to do. Central office is a part of it and we're going to report out to all the boards of the way.
Can you, um, I'm sorry, before, and I, several people have their hand up. Can you just tell us the status of where you are with this? You're gonna do an RFQ or an RFP for a consultant to help you with this analysis, because I I understand the concerns about the timeline. What what does that look like? Where are you in that process and when do you expect to make a selection of someone to be able to kick this analysis off?
The team's meeting weekly, uh, and uh, the goal is to put, uh, the, you know, the RF. P out in, uh, out in, uh. Uh, within, hopefully within the next week or two.
Okay.
Goal is, you know, what was prior to the actual final approval from the uh, RTM next Monday. To get this started, get the framework, you know, get the town, some of the town side staff hadn't actually been at some of these locations, so. They did that tour at the end of last week, um, which was important, happily, um, so.
Okay, no, no, no.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're trying to move to, you know, within the next few weeks to get purchasing.
A a week or a couple of weeks. And part of the reason I wanted to have this on, or we wanted to have this on tonight's agenda is just to to make sure when we voted on the million dollars. The charge was explained to us, but not, it wasn't actually in writing. And so we, I think we just wanted to make sure that everybody. Um, if there were any additional follow-up questions on this that might need to be considered in that charge, that you're going to. Whoever, you know, wh- whatever consultants are, then it's comprehensive so that we don't end up with um, questions. You know, new questions after that analysis is done, again, because of the time sensitivity of this, so.
Very quickly, I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
Sorry, step over you. Um, one of the things I want to stress, I mean, I've I've reached out to the first selectman. I hope that we can have a, you know, a voice in this process going forward from the Board of Ed standpoint, but I also wanted to. Correct me if I'm wrong, some of this million dollars was going to be uh, earmarked for things that we were going to do on the Dwight project anyway. Such as schematic designs and some site work. So I I know we're talking about a lot about delay, but some of the, some of this work is. Work we would have done anyway to get started on Dwight project, which one way or another needs to be done. I just want to make sure for for everyone's here and for the public that they're aware that that we're moving now on on some of this Dwight renovation work. Through the, through the first selectmen's.
And and I think just, because I think Mister Penley was about to get to a question and then kind of got veered off. About the timeline. And what it, what that would look like and and what the effects of that timeline. I think. The purpose of getting the study of the property is so that we can move forward as a town and making a decision. Whether we're gonna renovate this building as new or build a new school. But I think to your point. One of the things that I looked at just quickly is if we're gonna renovate this building as new. What the effect of that is gonna be during that timeline, that three year period. And say the, in a very conservative way, it'll be chaotic. Because just looking at where the kids are enrolled and where the nearest availability of space would be to fill those gaps. We would have kids all over the place. And it would be a major disruption to families, the children, um, the entire school community, so. And I I think you were kind of getting to a question and then it just kind of shifted, but the timeline, it it's three years.
Yeah.
It's gonna be. Very rough to. Some of what's being discussed in that three year timeline for those children. Especially children, families that have multiple children in the building, uh, they may not land in the same place. Which would be tricky, so.
What does that mean? They wouldn't land in the same place?
So if you had a first grader, they may be at Riverfield and your fourth grader could be at Burr. Just based on where the current enrollments are, pushing kids up a year and just trying and. Just saying if the enrollment in those grade levels stayed flat, what would happen? Because I know that was not really looked at. Uh, when we were having the discussion about um, costs and. Other factors that were not being discussed when feasibility were being talked about.
To be fair, that was one of the questions.
Right.
Because I I I think one of the questions was. Right at that concern and also the, and it also. Was a question because there's been a lot of discussion about potential health and safety issues and we might find that decision, we, the community. Could theoretically find that decision thrust upon ourselves. Even without, even before any of this comes to pass, so we hope not, but but I think understood.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I don't think we really could. And we still don't have a number on what that would be, but I can tell you just looking at it quickly last week. Um, in terms of disruptions to the educational environment for those children, it would be chaotic to see.
Thank you. Um. Other people, Mister Stark.
I want to um. See if the assertions in the letters we've received have any basis, so if I could ask a series of very brief questions. Jump ball for whoever wants to answer them. One of the letters says there's an incredible amount of mold in Dwight. Is there any basis to that?
Mister Testani?
No.
Okay, two questions that follow on that. Is there any analyzable objective information about the air quality? At Dwight versus the other schools in the district?
We recently did an air quality test in two classrooms, always, um, at the request of a parent. Uh, the results of. Were inconclusive in terms of the air quality within the classroom was similar to that of the outside air. You would find that most likely in any building. Um, but that has led us to now um, look into further assessment to the rest of the building to get. More answers to see if we need further testing.
I can get questions three and four. Uh, d- does the mandate to the consultant? Well, whenever it's made, include analysis of transportation of students in the renovation scenario? One of the letters implied that it didn't a lot. Um, cannot imagine that that's true.
Well, we didn't specifically earmark any of the million dollars, but um, we could, it it would be a minimal cost. Um, I would say under five thousand dollars to get an idea of what that transportation cost would be. If it's even feasible, because as we mentioned in the quarterly report, we're having a tough time bussing students now. Um, within their neighborhood schools to have to then. At the same bus stop, bring kids to multiple locations, it's probably almost impossible. I I don't think the bus company would have the capacity.
So there could be some merit to that question.
There's a lot of merit.
And then lastly, um, one of the letters suggests that we appoint a building committee now, even as this study is outstanding. Does that make any sense?
I don't know what we're doing. It it doesn't to me. I mean, a building committee would have a specific charge and right now there is none.
A building committee has to, that only makes sense after we have a building to build.
I'm sorry.
It only makes sense when we know we're building a building.
Yeah, which which building?
We're building it. Yeah, okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Do you want to respond or should, or?
Just in relation to what you just said, because I was gonna ask the same thing about a building committee. With the um, RF you're putting out to try to, you know, hire somebody for the one million dollars that we all um, agreed upon. Is the Board of Ed gonna have a representative or be involved in looking at those vendors and?
They are involved. Of the Board of Ed or central office.
Is somebody like, is Mister Testani, Jeff, any of the members gonna be involved in hiring or recommending or? Looking with that person? Like, has the man a request for them to be involved?
I believe the boards, we went before all the bodies, this was um, that we would be going back and updating the boards. Um, obviously, the Board of Ed, due to their chair, would get, would get regular updates and certainly ask questions.
But you have to speak.
We've been, we've, but but we've got representatives of Central Office and representative. From the, from Town Hall.
Central Office, so somebody from the Board.
The Superintendent's Office.
Superintendent's Office.
Okay, that was my.
There's certainly.
I mean, if the, I mean, we're not, we don't want to do something the Board of Ed is gonna object.
I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah.
Um, I I supported the million dollars. I agree that it's important. Asking if somebody, is there a member, I didn't know he was on the committee. That's my question.
Yeah, so far the answer is is no, but I I have reached out, as I mentioned, to the first selectman, you know, and certainly we are willing to provide a voice in this process. I'll also say that a lot of, you know, our facilities committee has done a lot of late work. Past year, a lot of these issues and and certainly I think we would have a lot of, you know, values. I'm just, I'm I'm always about.
So you're already on it.
For the selection of the consultant?
Yes.
Yeah, we had talked about, uh, either Angeles or myself, we're both sitting on, we evaluated. Those who respond to the RFP, selecting the consultant.
And then as we proceed, I assume that the, if Jeff's offering his support or other members are offering, they'd be brought in as well. I said that if he's already, I mean, he's offering his support to be further involved, I would assume, obviously, it's a collaborative project. Yeah. That was it, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Shero. Um, Mister Penley.
Well, no, I was just, just really wanted to, or Amy to tease out her her question, I guess, I guess to Mister Petersen. It sounds like you would like to be. Would like to be collaborating with the process, because you said.
I I I've been in the shop a week. But I, I, you know, what I, what I reached out to Mister Gerber about is I I wanted to be an open, uh, you know, lane of conversation. We we all have a vested interest in seeing these projects go forward in the best possible way for the town. Um, so I, you know, I'm I'm offering. To be out there for that. I, in terms of, you know, putting out an RFP, that's, that's, that's not where I am. But in terms of communicating where, you know, the board's. Uh, you know, heart is and all this and what work has has already been done, if that's, if that's a value, um, you know, what questions the board might have for the work that is being. Uh, contracted for, I'm certainly open to providing that to the town.
Okay, that's, it's kind of like full, full circle to what I was saying before. I was just trying to understand, like, because some work has been done and and. I agree, like, there's some things that need to be quantified. I I wouldn't have voted for that, that resolution if not. But um, there's also some, some qualitative analysis. And um, I'm, yeah, perhaps like being more directly collaborative with Mister Petersen or or. You know, whoever from from, but from the board of finance, someone from their facilities committee, maybe that would help. Um, because, you know, these are bullet points. And I think some of these are worth, not not in this meeting, but but worth getting into, like, there's a lot of good content on Monoterris. Which can be viewed um. In conjunction with other information we know about, about prior studies, prior cost analysis. So I think it would be helpful to have have that, but it's your, obviously your project, but that's, I, that's what I was trying to understand, like.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, this, I mean, it's just kind of real time here. It hasn't been agreed. Until very recently to do this and the the David and the project, you know, management. You know, in our group have been meeting with Angeles.
Yeah.
They're fleshing out um, a draft, you know, RFP, but that's, that hasn't been produced. I think that's supposed to be. Soon, but once that comes out, then the board, I mean, Jeff's gonna have to agree that that, and. You know, i- if you think something's missing, that wouldn't be helpful for us to put it out. Get bids on something that you don't think is complete and then, you know, then it's, it's, I mean, Jen Jacobson was warning about that and I agree with her. We don't want to do something that then you come back and say you missed this, you idiot, like, you know, so, you know, we need to make sure that. That it is agreeable, you know, that the the work is complete.
My take on where things are is I'm I'm happy to see that all are trying to pull in the same direction.
Yes.
So as long as we, you know, stay stay with that, keep a lots of communication open, I think that we're gonna do well with this.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Curlit.
Yeah, um, we're, we're talking a little bit about the front end of this process now and. Study that's gonna occur. Can we just fast forward a little bit? When do we expect the work to actually be done, completed and a and a a plan come back to this board for an actual? Request? Is it March? Is it May?
But, well, process on that.
Some of it's defined by the consultant, I mean.
But I mean, it wouldn't come back to this board, right? It's gonna have to, would it go, it's the Board of Ed, right? Okay.
Right, when the, when the whole analysis and due diligence is complete.
You're asking about the timeline in general. Do you, do you have any thoughts to share on that?
I don't, because typically. I don't, because typically, you know, when we put it out to bid, I mean, I guess you can set a timeline that they have to get it done, but when they typically tell you how long it's gonna take to get done and that's part of the bid.
They were doing it with four or six month stops.
Okay, and and if I remember correctly, before we kind of pivoted and and went down a path of this additional due diligence, you were you were expecting to come to a decision on uh, a plan and or a funding request in the spring, correct?
I think we were expecting a funding request. I think the plan kind of already been laid out. That's where.
So this is, so this is gonna set you back by four to six months then?
Um, I don't, I don't believe according to the way it was explained to us. This wouldn't go out of the pond prior to that anyway, so we wouldn't be delayed in terms of funding for this.
Because I know that the timing is just gonna be important to, you talked about this three, three-year cycle and trying to get through this process. I'm just trying to understand the fact.
If if ultimately we get to where we assume we're gonna get to, it would be less disruptive if we're building a school rather than trying to renovate current building.
And and again, two of the things that we would do at the beginning of any process like this, make sure we know where we're building it and to get that schematic design worked on. And that's exactly what the first selectman's plan.
Right, and for anyone that watched the Port of Ed meeting where this um project first came up, that the schematic design would be would that was part of what the original seed money was anticipated to cover and that piece of it gives more certainty on the project cost. Because right now, we keep talking about sixty-five million, there was a very, very low degree of confidence in that number.
Yep.
Um, or the renovation number. So we have these reports that no one Silver Petrocelli included seemed to have a lot of confidence about and it just didn't seem to make any sense to be looking at those numbers for any kind of decision making. So I, Mr. Peterson made the point earlier, but part of this I think um you know, keeps the process moving um along the same timeline and and, you know, the idea was to have I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but if if things go along as anticipated, this, the seed money for a project would be part of the current year's bonding, next year's bonding schedule, which it would have been anyway.
Right, right.
So that it, we're kind of trying to stay along that path, correct? Miss Vitale?
That was my concern. The board delay makes me, gives me pause, because when I voted for the million dollars, it was really to keep the project moving along. It was not to um, what we met with the Board of Ed in that special meeting. I you could do a building maybe for part of it, for the Dwight piece of it. Um, we know that there's going to be work done. Either a renovate like new or a new school. Um, I'm not really sure why we're breaking with the process of not pressing this school project. Um, the same as the other ones for the Dwight piece. I'm talking about, you know, the soil testing, the schematic designs, anything that's going to be done in that building. Um. I'm, if we're not going to go that route, just to the administration, I'm going to be asking for just every Board of Selectmen meeting for there to be an update on where we are with this project. Um, I asked for a timeline to get a better understanding of how this is all going to play out. Um, before we approved the one million dollars, we didn't have it then. I think that we need to be somewhat, when the RFP goes out, my suggestion would be to be very clear of what our timeline is and to make sure the company that we are hiring is able to meet that timeline. Um, just from, you've all, you've all, you know, seen how projects can can go on and um that needs to be a priority, in my opinion. Dwight is not a new project. Um, you know, you talk about some schools that are waiting for their their air, their HVAC projects um to occur and there might be some, I appreciate there's gonna be some moving around, but Dwight is an HVAC project. And um, it's been on the waterfall for at least a decade. So I'm just bringing it back that it's not new. Um, and want to make it very clear that the work, the work in terms of this million dollars, getting the answers at Dwight should be first and foremost. Um, I'm gonna repeat again, Mr. Penley mentioned that there are numerous surveys that have been done at Mona Terrace. I would hope that we would not be using a lot of money potentially just to get information that we already have, so I would ask them to look at those surveys, the same thing with the Giant Steps building. There's a chair when we purchased that property. I know there's been some assessments done on that building. Um, the ones that I've seen do not give me much confidence that it's going cheaper to renovate that building to be anything. I think that we need to do the due diligence for this million dollars, if not for Dwight, but just for capacity as a town for using these spaces. So I think I totally support the direction we're going, but want to keep Dwight at the forefront, um, because this project needs to move forward at the funding request. The Board of Ed is active and I think we need to be respectful of the action that that board has taken. Um. And, you know, thank the town for for putting this this forward, just to get the answers that are needed by the other town boards for approval to go forward later in the spring.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale, and I know Mr. Mottola has a question, but I I just wanna Yeah, I don't like the word delay. I think we're trying to avoid a delay and the reason I think that we were willing to approve a million dollars for this to go forward when the backup was pretty squishy was that we wanted to to give the administration the flexibility to move quickly without having to figure all this out, get an RFP draft and then go through three boards, because that would in fact delay. Um, so I think that was at least meant to be a gesture of good faith and a recognition that we all are interested in not delaying, but making sure that we have the the due diligence done. Yes.
Just, I think for the public, the Board of Ed approving their capital request earlier than usual.
Yeah.
So I think it's really important that just because the Board of Ed acted sooner, doesn't necessarily mean that other town boards need to immediately act afterwards. Um, you know, the Board of Finance, and correct me if I'm wrong, typically would take on all the capital projects together, so you better understand, think of what's best.
Yeah, and that's that's the other piece of it.
Not really a delay, it's just kind of we're rejigging the timeline.
Okay, no, good. I I just wanted to make the point that you know, the intent here was to do the opposite of delaying and to Mr. Peterson's point, this kind of keeps us moving on the path for Dwight, because the schematic designs that are part of this will be necessary anyway. So, uh, Mr. Mottola, did you have?
I just I know Dwight's been on the the waterfall for a long time, but this is the first time it's been brought to us, so let it be fair about that. And I got to tell you, as how how it was brought to us and all the questions that we had and the concerns, I I don't think it was gonna pass, to be honest with you, if if we didn't answer all these questions. I think we had significant questions and issues with respect to that site, that facility. We needed an answer to these questions. Everyone on this board, I can't really speak for everyone, but I think everyone on this board believes we have to do something up there, no doubt about it, but we need answers to these questions and um um, I mean, the worst thing that would have happened is if we passed the plan as approved and we started doing work up there, we found out that there was problems with the soil or the ground up there and the costs were gonna skyrocket. We'd really be in trouble if something like that happened, so we're doing our due diligence now to to see what the best options are and I don't think anyone, at least on this board, is gonna force anything down the Board of Ed's throat. That's not our intention. Absolutely not. That's not my intention, but but we need, just need answers to these questions, so just, I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you, Mr. Mottola. Mr. Gerber?
I I I want to reiterate something that you've said many, many times and and we've gotten a lot of emails about the air quality. And it it is a concern, even though this uh initial uh test came back um without a differential between the indoor and outdoor, uh, but if these if these new tests, you know, that your additional tests come back with with an issue, then those kids are gonna have to leave that school. So where are they gonna go? And um, so we better put a plan together. Um, you know, if if that's a real concern, we we need a plan. So, I mean, and and they're gonna be spread all over the the district or we'll we'll try to find a space where, I don't know, and maybe there's we can rent a space somewhere and, you know, I don't know which which district, maybe Easton or somewhere, but they're gonna have to go somewhere. Um, so, you know, all all I I definitely am concerned about the air quality, but um, it's really picked up a lot recently and I'm not sure um if it's well-founded or not. I know some of it is not founded on that particular report, but I did hear someone went to the hospital, don't know if it's related to um directly to um spores or not, you know, it it is a little um concerning and if it is a problem, then then we should be shutting the doors like tomorrow, right? So I'm not really sure if we're prepared for for that. I don't think we are. Because it is three years we're talking about, right? One way or the other, they're gonna be there for the next few years and maybe there's some interim steps we can do to to make it a little bit better.
Can I, can I just stress, I'm I'm sorry, I I totally get your point about about being to move kids in an emergency situation. There's no indication that we're anywhere near that at this point. We're we're following all best practices in terms of, in terms of our, uh, you know, uh, hiring consultants to check the air quality in the in the facility. So I don't want to leave the the impression with the public that we're on the verge of evacuating the school, because we are not there, the the reports that we've sent are have not indicated that the the building, say, we're doing more work because we're concerned to make sure we know that there are issues with this building and we're concerned to make sure it's a place that's safe for our children.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Walsh?
Uh, yes. In regards to the numbers on the first page, why do we ever put on costs for doing all the plans and stuff? It's almost like, to me, this is a seventy million dollar, gross. I never see that number. Well, now also now to more than sixty-five million. I know one million just went out the door that we approved. Correct? But that's still for the project.
The total project number that we that we have been working with incorporates seed money. So already incorporates, so the group should incorporate. The three million dollars that, you know, we passed out of the Board of Ed to ask for seed money was part of that.
Part of the sixty-five.
So you're telling us that we can reduce the amount that's in the capital plan by, there was a sixty-five thousand, sixty-five million dollar number there, then there was a three point something million dollar. So we just wipe out the three point something million dollars to know the whole thing. So I I'm I'm having a hard time. How does it keep coming that the number seems to keep changing?
Well, I mean, the number will will change when we have better data to give you, which is part of the reason we're doing the the billion dollars. Um, uh, but again, like the the, in our waterfall, the gross number for the entire project does include is is incorporating incorporating the seed money. That involves a lot of the planning, the schematic design, the borings and such.
All in costs of sixty-five million dollars, everything.
That that is the the current number on our waterfall.
And what are we holding? What are, David, what are we holding on on the waterfall currently? On the project?
Project as a whole.
Uh, as a whole, what are we holding right now on the most recent waterfall? Sixty-five million?
Sixty-five million, top line and reimbursement, so we're closer to about fifties, fifty-six, fifty-five.
The total, let's take a higher than.
Yeah, I think you mentioned that, but I think if you looked at the um
I'm talking about reimbursements.
Yeah, if you, if you look at it, the I've been carrying that waterfall around for two months and I left it on.
Yeah, so.
If you look at the line item, I think the total column had of the two, the ECC and Dwight was sixty-five million, and then if you looked at the cash flow by year, the three million was in the first year for the seed money and then you had the construction costs going out after that. So I think, I believe it was inclusive.
Yeah, on the on the uh, the most recent version of the waterfall that the Board of Ed passed, uh, there was three point four million dollars for seed money uh in twenty-five, twenty-six and then uh sixty-two point three million dollars in twenty-six, twenty-seven. You know, the big chunk of the construction money, so those, that that together is the is the sixty-five point seven.
I I think one of the things that, just just numbers wise, Jim, we're at Capital Summit discussing it.
Yes.
One of the concerns is is the escalators that were used to get into these numbers in the price per square footage. That realistically, I think, I think you and I had a discussion kind of back and forth on it. Where we landed on, if you did the Dwight plus ECC piece, that the sixty-five million roughly that's in here right now, which then has the reimbursement netted out of it to to get into the the low fifties, that realistically, our actual bonded number was probably closer to sixty-five, because you're off by probably about two hundred bucks a square foot. So I think that's why I think you may think it's a little bit higher, because I think we determined that that sixty-five was probably worth more like eighty, which probably netted to sixty-five in actual bond costs.
All right, thank you.
Can I just say, so Jim, I, to your point, I think incremental cost, so I don't know if we're gonna spend a million dollars with this consultant or not, it might be half a million. Part of that was already contemplated in the seed money, but there'll be some extra, like some hundreds of thousands of dollars to get this study done, but as far as I know, um, that's the, that's the incremental and I and I, again, I would just throw out the caution that this sixty-five million is we shouldn't think about it as a solid number until we have this analysis back, because it it could.
Silver Petrocelli data was really based on a a cost per square foot.
Cost per square foot, that that cost per square foot can have they they went to a lot of pains to to let us know that there were, they couldn't quantify various risks. The cost per square foot itself could is questionable. I mean, those costs can range, so we just, so this analysis, I think, will give more look, sorry, you know, won't be, it won't be uh bulletproof, but it'll be, provide more certainty.
And I think just to echo your point, we've had some concerns about what, how much confidence to put in the numbers. I think there's more likelihood that there's less confidence in that renovation number. As opposed to the build as new. I think the variance in the build as new is minimal compared to what the Pandora's box could be in opening up and renovating the current building.
They use bigger price per square foot on the renov, on the estimate for the to renovate as new. Was it like seven fifty versus seven hundred?
Slightly lower, because you've got a foundation and you've got.
Yeah, it was slightly lower, but then the unexpected risks in once you opened up the building. And then the limitations, because you're keeping the existing footprint also
I mean, we're, I, and I don't want to get off track, like, this is all speculation, which is why we just approved the money that is done, because we we could speculate about this all night. But, um, Mr. Walsh, did you?
Start. I mean, um I guess it was the third question that starts at the top of second page, that's where the facility. The, yeah, you're basically saying that some of the core facilities, this does not include the ECC, but core facilities built originally for sixty years, sixty years ago. Under what, at what population level are you going to be building core facilities? You're building three seventy-four, that's your plan? Or a building that will max out pursuant to your your population projection to two hundred and fifty-six or something else like that, go to the next.
Is to also include some specialized programming there. So for example, if we moved the two CLC classes from Mill Hill into the new Dwight, it may only move twenty kids. But the room sizes could accommodate fifty kids. So you may only see an increase in enrollment of twenty. But need rooms that could accommodate twenty-five kids. Because those children also need other spaces to include with that as well, OTPT, I mean.
But the population's still less based on what you're saying.
The population.
Not the three seventy-four, correct?
Right, but the space is the same regardless if you had three hundred and fifty regular education students or three hundred and thirty with special education with CLC. Need the same space, even though it's less children.
I need the same size cafeteria, same size bathrooms. I need the same size gymnasium if the population's less.
Well, the gymnasium, you're gonna build the same size, just based on the number of kids that are gonna use it at one time. Gymnasium is not based on the number of students in the building, just what the size of the classrooms that are gonna access. Cafeteria, you're gonna build adequate size so that you don't have to run four lunch waves. You want to run an appropriate number of lunch waves, so you're not starting lunch at ten in the morning or going until one-thirty in the afternoon.
Yeah, so there's gonna be less students, you'll have less lunch lines.
You'll have less lunch waves.
Okay. So you're, what, my initial, at what population level are you planning on building this thing? Whatever's decided ultimately on this. You don't know.
Okay, I I think, you know, our our thing has has is is spaced around a three seventy eight school. Sorry, three seventy. With eighteen full-size classrooms and and the associated spacious.
As the students that you're taking out of Mill Hill, how many rooms is that going to bring up Mill Hill? Few rooms. You? Yes, two. Two, two full-size classrooms, a CLC room, and then some ancillary spaces that they use. So they'll be able to reclaim their music rooms and reclaim some of those spaces that were intended for the K five population are now accommodating the CLC. Other parts of the town. All right, uh, two more questions down. Question starts, why wouldn't we instead of constructing a new Dwight Elementary School? By ECC classrooms, the Giant Steps property, the initial sentence, Giant Steps property has not been made available to the Board of Education. Direction. Mr. Gerber, have you told them they can't use Giant Steps property?
No, I mean, that's why we're looking at it. So but I think that was, they assumed that.
Not correct.
Well, they originally assumed that, but I think they now know that that is open.
I think the genesis of that was when we bought the Giant Steps property. And and this board was concerned that that the Walter Fitzgerald campus occupy only part of that. So the town could contemplate other uses for the space.
Yeah. And I was ever written in stone, but that was the. I voted on that and my thought was, yes, that's what you're you're asking to use the Giant Steps program and you want to use this building. And the town should reserve the right to be able to use the rest of the property, whatever what the town decides. Because, you know, getting back to Mr. Penley's position that the first selectman had a problem with and I have a problem with. Bottom line is, the Board of Ed decides what type of programming. The town decides what type of facilities we want to give them and what our taxpayers. That has always been the case and has never changed. That's the way it works, both under the law and 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 in actuality, under the state statutes. It's the town to decide and the for the taxpayers, both at the executive level, the Board of Selectment, this board and the RTM. What we're willing to fund. It's not that the Board of Ed determines that, yes, we work in partnership with the Board of Ed. We've had a great partnership. I would say it's been rare that what you vass for, we have been giving you, to be honest with you. But that's the way it's been. Um, and so I don't, as we all found out, I don't think we'd have a problem looking at the Giant Steps property if you needed more facilities. But the last sentence I don't really get says, I don't believe we should explore this option any further. Who is the I in that sentence? Me. So this was a multi-part question. I don't believe we should explore the option as an elementary school. Yeah, it's right around the corner from an existing elementary school. To have to to build that as an elementary school would be no different than building one on the Dwight property itself. So apples to apples cost, why would you build it there? I'm like, somebody already mentioned, we have two two middle schools, a stone's throw away from it. Yes, it is a baseball area. Right, makes no sense.
It's also two and a half miles.
Let's be honest. You wouldn't buy a summer home down the street.
Good example, man.
The public cannot hear what's being said if there's background talk.
And you weren't, no, right? Because we needed a third, third middle school. And where was the property? Right, I get that. Tell me where the property was in the town of Fairfield that we either owned or could have purchased for, you know, you could always buy buy property for astronomical amounts. We could have, well, we could have, at the time, if we could have cleaned up the Xide property, we could have bought that from it, from from Xide instead of this developer who's now going to try to put it, wanted to put a Porsche dealership there, never was anticipated on. And if it was clean, yes, we could have potentially purchased that. We could have put something down at the Metro Center and purchased that. Not none of the, none of those spots I'm advocating for, but what I'm saying is at that time, with the with the Board of Ed that was before us and the need for a school space at that time, our options were limited. I get, I get it. So that's, you had no choice. Necessity. Correct, but you don't have that same situation now. Essentially, we do. Well, let me ask you, let me. Yes, if if the studies show that building a new building, say it's all ledge. If if the building shows that we can't do what you want to do there and the cost is going to be, I'm just going to throw out a round number, a hundred million dollars. Impossible. I'm just throwing out a number. It sounds financially does not make sense. I can tell you it will not be a hundred million dollars. It won't even be seventy five million dollars.
If if I can interject here, I I I don't know that it's productive to to relitigate the 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 middle school issue, although I I understand.
I'm not the one who tried to relitigate. I'm not the one who brought up that that name of that bill.
To go back to something you said earlier that 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 connected with partnership. Sure. I I think that, look, we don't know what this is going to determine. We we have no idea why we're doing the work.
Exactly.
Beginning. So I I think that as long as the partnership remains intact, as long as we remain in contact with each other and understand that we're, what we do is ultimately going to be shaped by what we find.
Yes.
And we will come back. We will have more meetings like this. We will answer whatever questions.
Part of the partnership, nothing should be thrown off the table before we know what the answers to these questions are. I'm not, I'm not advocating saying that that's where it should be.
But from my from my standpoint, I'm going to wait for this data.
But this.
Rather than say we should, we should.
That that analysis is not going to include building an elementary school at Giant Steps, just to be clear, so.
And and I I'm assuming this was your question, so I'm going to add to it. No one ever said that if you wanted to build a large ECC on that site, it would not be, we wouldn't want to explore that further. But building the elementary school when you don't need to on that site, I think you should take that off the table. Unless need requires.
You will do what need requires.
But bottom line is, from my reading of these answers, if this thing doesn't get approved, whatever reason it is, you have no plan, plan B. That's what I read, right? Plan B? Yes. There's there's a question in here. Fine.
There in the beginning.
Yeah, and. What's that?
First page, Jim.
First page. You to. What happens if the BOE or any town body turned down the idea, does not want to spend seventy million dollars on this project at this location?
Soon before. It's taken this third dependent, when it's G C, et cetera, ideas.
No, that's the first, that's like the first half, right? I have no further questions.
Well, it's for you. I just have a, I guess, a general comment. While we've been sitting here, additional emails have come in to all of us. Um, and I know that this hasn't come before us, we're not the delay, but there seems to be a perception in the community that there are delays and there are, or there is a mold issue. That's what's in there, you know, if it's not legitimate, somebody needs to address and calm down the community.
Communication was sent on Friday explaining that exactly that and what the process is moving forward, so. Can't speak to why.
So that was sent to the Dwight, the Dwight community? With the tests of the, with the results of the testing you did, and you said you're doing more testing.
We're doing more assessments to determine if further testing, so that is in the process. Should be completed in the next week to ten days. I mean, given the holiday next week, you know, it could be first week in December, the completion of that. And then we'll get the findings. Uh, we are working, we'll work with our health department. And also anyone they recommend if we need to do something for the community there to ask questions and get some medical opinions from that, that's our plan.
I I think it is like the that you're bringing up, super important issue, really is parallel to this whole discussion about the renovation, the 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 project. Because like like Mr. Gerber said, if there's some health issue there, all bets are off. It's not a delay to this project. It's 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 a parallel problem that's happening. So it's it's, I mean, there's no.
Okay, I agree with the selectman, what he said. We have a different, a whole different problem if that it's that's happened. I don't think anybody in this town on any board is going to put children at risk. We already had a situation where McKinley was, and once we found out, the kids didn't go there anymore. Stop. We did, we had to work around it. We did. We built a brand new building and that's what would happen immediately. Wouldn't be, that's the driving force, like, oh, kids are being injured right now. So we should pass this building to be built over the next two years and let them suffer and take all those lawsuits on. It would just be, it would, they would stop probably the next day till we figured it out. I mean, I just want to ask a simple question. As a taxpayer, seventy million is, seems to be something people are having a hard time swallowing. Or sixty five million, uh, maybe fifty five sounds better, I don't know. But when you, when you, when you divide this out by the next sixty years, because you're going to get sixty years out of this building. And then there's going to be another group of people sitting here, maybe in this room or another room, arguing about the same thing of a new building and. The return on investment is pretty near. Spending, say, sixty million dollars to get a sixty-year building. I I understand that point, but you have to imagine, we have like a hundred projects, okay? Everyone would be great to be able to do, starting tomorrow, stick a shovel in the ground. We have a WPCA that is kind of crumbling. We need to do a lot of work there. I never had to do that. You see the numbers on there? Have you listened to these meetings? Are they, are they good numbers? Oh, no, no, actually, actually. I mean, are we getting, is WPCA getting into the numbers as deep as? Their numbers are narrowly off by three hundred percent the wrong way. Yes, so that they're.
They did, they did get studies to, yeah.
Their numbers are. Yes, and and and, you know, I'm not trying to beat up the board pitch case. You guys also have a lot of priorities to, your air conditioning project is spread throughout the thing. We understand that is your number one priority. And that's been your number one priority that people have come before this board have continually said, that's our number one priority for money. And we listen to you and said, that's fine. Right? I mean, there's a lot of projects, not enough money, but a lot of projects. I'm not saying that anything is not a great return, but they're all great returns. Just wish we had half a billion dollars in the bank to do them.
Um, okay. Any other? Yeah, just for what it's worth, just one comment I'll throw out, because there was a suggestion about looking for spaces for the children if we did a renovation. Um, I personally think you should have a contingency plan if you think there's risk in the building. Putting that aside, I'm not sure it makes sense to flesh out a big analysis until we know what, with some confidence, what the cost effort differential is. Because if it's a few million dollars, there's no way you're going to take that on. You're going to pay more money to get a new building to avoid the disruption of moving kids around. I mean, I think that's obvious, and you wouldn't even offset the cost of moving the kids around. So it's a different equation if the cost differential is two million or five million or eight million versus if it's forty million, you know? So I I think that, I think that we need to see what we're talking about here before we delve into that. Um, that doesn't mean that there shouldn't be some sort of, um, you know, potential contingency plan or thought around what might happen if you believe there could be a need to to move these children earlier.
I have spoken to several colleagues in the meeting vicinity to see what the feasibility would be to accommodate and host. Um, and it's going to be, it's not going to be easy.
Okay, understood. Um, are there any other questions on this? All right, well, I want to thank, thank you, Mr. Testine, thank, thank you to the Board of Education for the work they put into this. Thank you for providing written responses, Mr. Peterson. Appreciate.
We'll be back soon.
Yes, and appreciate the the collaboration. Thank you so much. All right. Okay, so we're going to move on to item six. Which is to hear a presentation from the Golf Commission on the ten-year golf improvement plan. Is this there with me for a minute?
Great, I have. My name is Mike Harrington.
Thank you, Mike. I was looking for my notes and I'm sorry that I didn't remember. Welcome. Hi.
Been a resident at Fairfield for fifty years. The golf course is fifty-two years old, so I've missed the first two years.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight.
My pleasure. Happy to be here. This is Lori Monzelusa. Lori is on the Golf Commission. And also she is one of the three people on our long-term plan subcommittee to put the goal of the plan that we're. So.
All right, so, um, backup just for everyone's information. So I think the board has printed copies for the public. Um, the backup for this item is posted online and I believe it begins on page one fourteen.
I've got it on the screen.
Yep, and for for the, um.
And I'm told that I can offer, hey, it works.
All right.
We have the golfers, Mr. Peterson?
Now.
Kind of disabled one. Well, we're trying to get the hot to the track for spring.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to be here. I appreciate you're taking the time to listen to us. Our objective tonight is to update you on what's going on at the golf operations, which is not only Smith Richardson, but the driving range and the Carl Dickman Part Three. Uh, we we recognize that as we present this plan, we're going to be talking about capital improvement projects. And we understand do that on a year-by-year basis, not for the whole. But hopefully you will be acquainted enough with what we're doing and when we come along in future years with needs, you will recognize that these are things that we were anticipating and wanted, so. Um, the objective of our subcommittee and this plan is to lay out the steps necessary to preserve golf course revenue. Continue with that record of revenue, continuing operating expenses and keep the golf course to a benchmark standard right. I'm going to talk today about the current state of the three entities of golf operations, the proposed improvements we have in mind and what the financial impact of those will be. The chart shows the golf operations financial performance for all three courses combined. You can see the top line of the revenue for H. Smith Richardson Golf Course. Then the second line of Carl Dickman, the third line is the golf program, which while I speak to you, you can mention. As you can see, we've done very well with the revenue generally running in the three million dollar range. The combined operating shots from twenty twenty-one on have been in the one point eight to two point three range. The golf course operating income has been in the black and is in most recent years was in the neighborhood of three quarters of a million dollars. We do have a debt burden on the golf course. It most significantly increased two years ago with the installation of our new clubhouse. And that added about three hundred and fifty thousand to the debt burden two years ago, and it is now declining. Uh, the other debt burden we have is from the ten-year plan that was approved in twenty ten, uh, most of which has been amortized and is behind us. The Carl Dickman component of that, you can see here the number of rounds. And I've taken the rounds back further than the finances, so you can see the dramatic impact of COVID. You can see that the Carl Dickman course in twenty eighteen had uh eighteen thousand rounds. We're now up to routinely having thirty to thirty one thousand rounds at that golf course. The significant jump you see there occurred in twenty nineteen and twenty, and that's heavily impacted by COVID. Financially, the par three courses operated again on the on a continuing basis in the black. And of course, we benefited greatly from that substantial increase in the rounds. The golf course today is in very good condition. It has been well maintained by Peter Grace and his operating staff. The driving range is a different story. The driving range is over on Hudson Health Road. It is and it has historically been in very poor condition. Fortunately, we received the permission from the town for a half million dollar investment to improve the driving range and to install a short range practice facility. And we could done that and it opened in September. And you can see that in the budget for twenty twenty four, twenty five, a substantial jump of almost a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars in expectations for the improved driving range. And I can tell you since we opened in early September, the rate at which we are benefiting from that improvement is at least equivalent, if not better than that. Excuse me. We are putting in a short range practice area. We've begun clearing the grounds for that. It will go between the softball field and the driving range up in that area. And of course, the big gorilla is A Smith Richardson. Here are the rounds at Smith. Once again, you see uh twenty nineteen, twenty one, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty timeframe is significant jump. The fifty six thousand rounds in the fiscal year twenty twenty one is just unbelievable. Uh, to give you a little anecdote, we we got all the data for the Connecticut Golf Association Regional Municipal and Public Golf Courses for twenty twenty two. We had data from forty five courses. The highest number of rounds of any single course in that timeframe was forty nine thousand nine hundred rounds. And it was at Smith Richardson Golf Course. By comparison, Fairchild Wheeler that year had forty six thousand rounds, and it is an excellent and well played course. Fair, I am sorry, Tashua Knowles had forty six thousand. Fairchild Wheeler had seventy five thousand. But they have two courses and they're open all year round. So this golf course at Smith Richardson has gotten as much wear and tear as you could possibly expect of it. And you can see from an operating profit basis, uh, the revenue had been uh run up to almost two and a half million. We're in the black on an operating cost basis. The youth program line on here, uh, let me speak to that. Three years ago, we brought in a new golf professional, Bob Biggannett, whose passion is getting people to play golf, youth, golf clinics, et cetera. He started the youth program. And he started a program of clinics for people like Warbets and other people. He teaches courses both at Smith and at Carl Dickman. And this line of youth program revenue up to forty five thousand is net of his cost. And it goes uh the way it's been set up. Accounting wise, it flows into Park and Rec and therefore through to the general fund, but we are claiming credit for it as part of the activities that are golf. And you see again after the debt service and once again, the significant jump from fiscal year twenty one to twenty three, which is the new clubhouse, but we continue to operate in the black after covering all of the debt service. Couple other things about Smith. With the new golf uh concession clubhouse, uh, this year we have had seventeen charity events at golf course. Those charity events have raised four hundred and forty thousand dollars for the charities and they are all basically Fairfield based charities. We have been unable in the past with the condition of the clubhouse and the concession air to attract events such as these charity events. But we have a very strong portfolio and next year, every single one of these charities has already up or nominated to come back again in twenty twenty five. And then, as I said, the youth adult program, you can see here the level of activity. We started in twenty twenty one with about three hundred and fifty uh total, uh, two eighty two youth and a hundred and seventy two adults. And we've grown that now to almost four hundred youth and two hundred and seventy two adults, tremendously successful. Now, with respect to the condition of the golf course, cart paths, they are frankly abysmal. The USGA minimum standard for a cart path is eight foot wide asphalt cart paths. I'm gonna step ahead a minute to show you. This is an aerial photo of the back nine. And I will show you the front in a minute, but the color coding lines, the yellow lines are the original six foot cart paths. And out of the five and a half miles of cart paths on this golf course, about four and a half of them are original. The red line is no cart path at all on that hole. And then the solid green lines are the few areas where we have put in the eight foot wide uh specification cart paths. On the front nine, same thing, it's almost all yellow. Those are all the old original six foot wide port uh asphalt cart paths. Hole number one on the far left has a green new cart path because the free repair people came in in the winter three years ago when the ground wasn't frozen. Their equipment was wider than six feet and they tore up the whole cart path, so they built the one on number one. And then in the green and the red on the far right hand side, the ninth hole has a stress where there's no cart path. So the cart paths, as I said, we have five and a half miles of cart path, about a mile of it meets USGA standards. We have about a half a mile of course with no cart paths whatsoever. And of the four miles that remain, they are inadequate for emergency vehicles. They are hazardous and unsafe. They are in such poor condition that when our golfers rent carts, they don't use the cart path. They go out on the golf course and they're tearing up the golf course. And the course wear because of that is is excessive and significant. If we get back to having a specification cart path and get the carts back on the paths and off the golf course, that will help greatly with the condition of the course. The uh also in the back nine there on the left hand side, way down on the bottom, that area is as far removed from the driving from the clubhouse as possible. We couldn't even get emergency vehicles in there on those cart paths. Uh, and that is a a remote area. That whole area in the back nine there is is very difficult to access from a safety standpoint. Bunkers. Uh, this chart shows you all forty two of the bunkers and when they were last rebuilt. Uh, when you approved the ten year plan in twenty ten, one of the significant parts, and a difference in the drainings that I will address in a minute, was rebuilding bunkers because the bunkers were so plugged up that they flooded. We would get a rainstorm and it would take three or four days for them to drain out. And we rebuilt a lot of those bunkers, literally cleaning them out and installing drainage systems in the bottom of the bunker before restoring them with sand. But what you see from this chart is it has been nine years since we did any significant bunker rebuild. And the USGA tells us the average life of a bunker is eight, ten years. Now, life of a bunker, you've got to understand, you consider a bunker not to be alive. And that's not an easy thing to explain, but what happens is the size of the bunkers came in. The heaving thaw in the winter causes the soil to work up. It begins to mix in with the sand and it begins to turn the sand more into a basic soil. And then they again don't drain well and they certainly don't play well. I don't have a lot of experience being in bunkers, but people who should help me. So we are, we're living on borrowed time in the bunkers. Right now, they're okay. And we can live with them. So the current state is what we call acceptable. The current sand quality is marginal. All we've done basically with sand is not replace any, but supplement as they begin to plug up and and present us with the problems. Trees, what greens rather. We've had a USA agronomists come build our course uh three different times. The last time was this past August. Recently was twenty twenty. They have tested all of our green. And when we tell them we've got fifty thousand rounds on this golf course, they just absolutely say that can't be right. Check your data. Because our greens are in extremely good condition. They do an in-depth funnel sample, take it out, open it up. You know, half an inch of turf, another three quarters of an inch of loose root system and then some sand, et cetera. And they tested about seven of them in August and every single one of them was in good shape. So it's astonishing how good they are, but they are in excellent condition, but they're kind of wearing tears uh that we experience on this golf course. Trees is a whole nother story. All of the agronomists who visit us all three times, two thousand and four, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty four said, you guys have got to do something to prune your trees. There's basically three issues. One is they're infringing on the course and impacting the playability of the court. And while it may make it harder, we can live with that, but what it does is slows it down. And so that affects pace of play and that affects rounds and that affects enjoyment with with playing golf at the golf course. The other thing is that as they have grown up, we have other areas of the course that are in shade and the turf health, it being adversely affected by the absence of sunlight. Now, this is primarily on the fairways, not on the greens, because the greens are doing pretty well. But the tree growth over the years has impacted the turf health of the golf course. And the third thing is if you look around the golf course at the area that you would call forested, they are so densely packed and they are so in need of they need to do some cleaning up of those so that the remaining trees will be healthier and more robust. We received from the twenty twenty one USGA report a one year recommendation for tree work, tree work to be done in a year. That tree work is still not done. And it is not done for a couple of reasons. One is the golf course is full of golfers. But much more importantly, we have not had the resources in terms of staffing or findings to do all the tree work that was called for. Uh, it doesn't take exceptionally unique equipment, unique big bucket trucks that we don't have. But this is readily this is work that we could readily put out for bid and bring people in to do it in small increments around the golf course. So we have fallen behind considerably from that twenty twenty one report in addressing the tree work. We need to do maintenance and replanning beyond the resources of our current ground screw and therefore plan. Drainage, this is another tremendous success story. When we came to you in twenty ten, we were having severe flooding issues at the golf course and we would have what we call no cart day. I mean, uh, cart path only days. And people could not get out and take their carts on the path. I mean, their carts on the golf course. And so uh it would restrict play, it would slow down play, and we were losing interest in the course because other courses weren't, didn't have this problem. Tremendous amount of drainage work was done as a result of that plan. We had several fairways. We dug them up and put holding grains and et cetera. It dramatically improved the course. So next to the impact of COVID, I would say this is probably the thing that most affected the growth in rounds in the mid of twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen timeframe. Current state is acceptable. We are managing it. We don't foresee at this point any new drainage requirements, but it is something that has to be attended to as part of the ongoing maintenance of the golf course. So here are our proposed improvements. We're looking at a ten year capital of a million and a half bucks. At Smith, we're talking about a half a million dollars for the cart path, and I will get into a little detail on that in a minute. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the expectation of bunker maintenance requirements. Four hundred thousand dollars for tree maintenance. We do not have a lightning automated lightning warning system at this golf course. We and the wheel are the only two in the area that don't have an automated system. Uh, and we have a a need, we believe, long term for a restroom facility that I will uh get into in a minute. Dickman Par Three has no requirements except if two needs, a lightning warning system. And the driving range, while it is a beautiful new driving range, the building at the driving range is original. And that building is what houses all of our equipment. Our staff's offices are in there, et cetera. So that building is going to have to be replaced at some point at an estimated cost of a hundred thousand dollars. So the uh priorities we as a subcommittee establish on here is the uh you know, the cart paths is absolutely number one priority is tree management at number two to ensure the health of the golf course overall. We've made the the driving range building, the restroom facility at the turn three and four, but they're a tie. I mean, there's not a lot of difference. Rebuilding of the bunkers, we've made low priority because right now we don't have specific foreseeable needs, but as time passes, we may find that those uh they need to be moved up in the priority. Now, let me explain a little bit about the restroom facilities. Right now, when you knock the ninth hole and make the turn to start playing the back nine at the tenth hole at the clubhouse, at the end of the clubhouse, the restroom facility is accessible only if you go into the front of the clubhouse and then you go into the restroom. And that like on the golf course and that slows down the pace of play. There is in that area septic, water and electricity to put in a restroom facility at that point. So that's one of the possibilities. The second one is if you play the tenth hole at the top of the hill by the maintenance building, there is currently a portal at, which is pretty distasteful, frankly. And there is room up there that we could install a better cleaner and more satisfying facility up there. So so the restroom facility is one of those two options that we foresee. And when you see how we've laid the plan out over time, they're two or three years down the road. And of course, the uh lighting facilities I mentioned, uh, we don't have automated facilities of both courses. What what happens now is golf professional and the maintenance crews all watch the weather. And if they see something coming in that they think could be dangerous, then we blow the horn and clear the course. And that's pretty random and that's also placing awful lot of responsibility on those individuals to make that call. So cart paths are our priority. As I said, eighty percent of the cart paths are unacceptable or non existent. This is a big project. It's not the kind of thing that we can say, let's do three holes one year and three holes the next year. You've got to come in, you've got to rip out the old cart paths, you've got to prepare the path for a substrate. And then you have to have equipment come in and lay out the asphalt. We've already been told that the town D P W would not do that kind of work. So this is something we would have to scope and put out for bid. But it's all unique, well, not unique equipment, but it's all equipment that we don't have at the golf. So there's a setup charge, there's an expense. And to spread this out over time in our view would be inefficient. And we would just as soon get on with it in one fell swoop and a half a million bucks before we could get in the entire golf course up the specification. The way I understand the schedule right now, what we would have to do is if you guys were kind enough to approve our request in the January, February timeframe, we have to scope this, we have to write specs, we have to send it out. we have to scope this, we have to write specs, we have to send it out, bids, et cetera. And we don't want to be coming in here and tearing up the fall course in July, August, et cetera. So our hope would be that we would be lined up and ready by fall of 2025 to come in there over the winter and rip out the old paths and prep everything. One of the time constraints we have is that the asphalt plan is not open all winter. So we would try to get everything ready. The asphalt plan opens in March. And so try to get things done in the March, April uh, timeframe of 2026. So that's the sort of timeframe we're looking at. So that's cart paths, trees. Forgive me guys, I'm, I'm sorry. The, the tree management criteria, as I said before, is we need to maintain playability, we need to have turf belt, we need forestry management. Frankly, we do not have the expertise within the golf course staffing to make some of these judgments about trees. And we have had the tree ward up and he has taken a look and he doesn't disagree with, with the things that we think we need to get done. And so what we believe we need to do is to hire either an agronomist or a someone who can come through this golf course and lay out a specific multi-year plan. I mean, we envision saying, okay, here are photographs of the golf course with exits on the trees that have got to go, do that next year. That's just what the USGA agronomists did for us when they were here in 2024. So we need some consultation. So that's the third bullet on this slide. We need professional forestry and arborist consultation. We are guessing $400,000 over the 10-year period. Uh, it remains to be seen, but, but I can tell you that I believe Patterson Club three or four years ago, they took out 1,500 trees. You, you don't, it's expensive. That's an awful lot of work. We don't addition anything that significant in scope, but we're talking hundreds of trees that are going to have to be removed from the golf course. So it's not urgent, but it's something that we think should be a high priority immediately following the cart path project. Bunkers, as we said, right now are, uh, no current issue. We are living, we believe, on borrowed time. Uh, what we will do is we will continue as we do every year at the, in the springtime to take a good look at all the bunkers and see which ones need more sand, whether or not any of them are beginning to plug up. And so we would evaluate the 42 bunkers every year and identify those that are most at risk. And as we think they reach a point where they require significant maintenance, we would bring those forward with each of our annual segments of the plan saying, okay, this is this year's budget work. So, um, just to look at costs, if you look at this chart, the the historic rebuild cost when we did rebuild the 42 bunkers, uh, over the previous 15 years, then they were 13,000 bucks a bunker. So we're estimating it with escalation in the nine years of the past, so we're probably looking at 25,000 bucks a bunker if they were rebuilt. As I said, we have 42 bunkers. So that's certainly got to be far short of, uh, doing them all. So we put in the plan 350,000 bucks. Now, the other, as I had mentioned, the driving range building needs to be replaced. I described the restroom facility requirements at the golf course and the lighting systems. So those are the other things that we have in the plan. And the next chart is our proposal for laying this out over time. Year one is the, the rope. That's a half a million to fix the carpet. Beyond that, we have sort of spread it out over bunker work and tree work. Because those are things that could be done in small individual projects. Now, the cart path project is one to excuse, but the other things, we can break them up in small pieces and farm them out and it won't, it won't be cost inefficient to deal with them in that way. So we have laid this plan out at this way. You can see we put the, uh, the restroom facility in year five, we put the driving range building in year six. We put the, uh, lighting safety system in years three and four. But again, we'll play all that by year and assess the pre-work and the bunker work. So if you put all this together and it's a million and a half bucks and it's a half million in the first year and about a hundred thousand, this is a projection of the debt service. And the, uh, we made an assumption of, uh, 4.75%. I know at your first select my budget review meeting, you were looking at something a little lower, I think. But in any event, uh, the incremental annual addition to the debt service is projected on this chart now. Uh, let me give you a couple of additional financial things that are on in, in here. Our costs are about, uh, our operating costs are about 2.3%. At your budget meeting that I listened into with joy in September, you were looking at a possible escalation of 2.6%. That's about 58,000 bucks. Month ago, we had a review of the rates for next year. We raised the rates for carts by two bucks a cart. We raised the rates for greens feeds. We raised the rates for the par three. The net effect of all those increases was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue increase. So we are very comfortable that we can raise rates successfully. The other thing I will tell you, the latent demand for this golf course is tremendous. We're doing 45,000 to 50,000 rounds. The, the service that we use to manage our tee times tell us that for every tee time we grant, particularly on weekends, we're turning away five people that can't get a tee time because we just can't accommodate any more than 45,000 to 50,000. So there is a tremendous latent demand here. Our approach to the rates was to get our course at a minimum equivalent to the competitive courses, which are principally Fairchild Wheeler, Tashua Knowles and Longshore Club. So we've taken action now for next year. That does not include the driving range. And the driving ranges, as I showed you earlier, we already raised a year-over-year budget by another hundred thousand dollars. So we are feeling very comfortable that we have aggressive, not aggressive, I don't know if I'm going to say aggressive. We have certainly been assertive and going for improved rates and improved revenue and we are comfortable that those are achievable numbers. So with that, the capital plan summary versus the objective we set forth at the beginning. It preserves and increases our revenues. It continues revenue exceeding expenses. It will keep the golf course to a benchmark standard of play. And a strong latent demand for rounds allows for radiant sources that will comfortably cover the debt associated with this plan. And so we thank you for your time, attention and support as the third bill of golf course and operations. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, um, Mr. Harrington. I really appreciate this and I have to say, I wish we had this quality of presentation on all of our capital projects. It was excellent. Um, thank you very much for the details.
Rent them out.
Exactly. Uh, no, this was. Really? This was excellent. Thank you for the thought that was put into it. It's, um, yeah, I, I did get an opportunity to read it this afternoon, but this was very helpful. Um, all right. I'm going to turn it over to the board for questions. Not you.
Not me.
Not you. Mr. Matola.
Thank you for your presentation. Uh, so how, how confident are you in these numbers for the, the cost of these projects?
For cost of what?
How confident are you in your numbers with respect to the costs of, of the project?
I'm very confident in the numbers, but the, the point is this. We put 350,000 in for bunkers. That will fix a certain number of those. Will that number be correct for the 10-year timeframe? I'm not certain of that. I'm not, I'm pretty confident with the number. The same with the tree work. It's very fungible. And we can ebb and flow with it, providing we do enough to preserve the condition of the golf course. So.
Let me ask the question this way. This is probably a better way to ask. Uh, you're asking for 1.5 million dollars over 10-year period, right? 1.5 million dollars? So let's say year six, you have on here a hundred and twenty thousand dollars you want for that year because you want to do something at the driving range and the bunkers, 20,000 dollars. I guess my only concern is if we're going to go this route, I don't think members of this board are going to want you to come back in year six and say, you, you remember when we gave you that presentation six years ago and year six said 120, but we really need 150 or 175 to do the work for this year. That's, that's not what's going to happen. Is that fair to say?
It's not going to happen because the cost estimates are wrong. It could happen because the number of bunkers, for example, fails. But other than that, no, it will not happen. We're confident in the per-evat cost, if you'll allow me to, to phrase it that way. But we haven't touched 42 bunkers in nine years.
I mean, the way you did it before 10 years ago, we just, a hundred thousand dollars every year, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, um, first off, I want to answer your question, but I do want to, uh, thank you for the presentation as well. I thought that was incredibly thorough and, and did a great job. This actually is very similar to what was done back in 2009, 2010 for the prior 10-year plan. What, what the golf commission did then, and it's consistent with what's being presented here, is that this is kind of like a guideline of what they expect, but there was, um, fungibility from year to year. The idea was that at, at the time, I remember selectmen, Ken Flato at the time, um, the chairman of the board of finance, Tom Flynn at the time, said, hey, look, we don't want to be surprised by these projects. So tell us what you need and over the next 10 years. And, and I think that's what you have done here. That's what we did there. And I can tell you with firsthand knowledge, the, the 10-year plan that was put forward, it was generally about a hundred thousand dollars a year. But what we did in year three or five, there was fungibility there.
So some years it went up a little bit or?
Yeah.
I just, I don't remember. I just remember a hundred thousand.
And it was, they did eight bunkers instead of, uh, six because they couldn't afford it or they did three because they were bigger projects instead of five or whatever. Yeah.
So this is, all right, there, there could be some movement on these numbers. It's, and I appreciate that if that could happen, that's any budget here. Um, what, what, real quick, and then I'll move on because it's getting late. What did you do from a, to figure out the cost estimates? Did you, did you hire somebody? Did you, how did you figure out half a million dollars for the cart paths, for example?
With respect to the cart paths, we got uh, estimates and quotes on a couple of the different holes. And we got the cost of asphalt for QB guard and we extrapolated across the course.
All right.
So that was the asphalt. The bunkers, as I said, we had all that bunker work done.
So you kind of knew, you just jacked it up?
And that was all done by outside resources, by the way, not by the staff at the golf. The tree work, we have been doing so. We haven't been neglecting it totally. We just haven't done enough. So we have an experience base on what the local contractors charge us when they come in to do the tree work.
Thank you. That was a great presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. Walsh.
How wide are the golf carts? How wide are they?
Golf carts? You know, I don't know what the actual wheelbase is, but less than six feet, five feet, I would guess.
Four and a half.
Because on the six-foot paths, they still say on the path. Right in the path.
66 inches.
On that.
So five and a half.
Five and a half.
If you're using clutter.
Yeah.
I, I thought the presentation was, was great. One thing I personally like about that lighting safety system to, to.
I love it.
And that at the same time, because I wouldn't want to hear that in the first two years, someone got struck by lightning. It's like, okay, well, maybe we should have done that.
You know, we wrestle.
Now that you identified the problem.
Excellent.
Seems like that should be prioritized on higher. What I came away from your doing this and being around what we did, the hundred thousand dollars a year, which I thought was one of the most successful programs in the town. Number one, that we identified the amount of money needed. Two, that we followed through on it for 10 straight years, just basically just in the budget. Uh, was that the work got done, force got dramatically better. Uh, and it was a very successful program and in looking at these numbers briefly, seems to me that instead of bonding a hundred thousand dollars almost every year, I don't know why we should just budget close $600,000 year one, catch up on safety issue as a cart pass. And then do the hundred thousand dollars again and give it and let you, or you, let you guys determine as we go what the priority is. But that would be another program that we start and we pay for that with cash with the thought that the way we did it before and, and bonding the hundred thousand dollars. Because that would get you approximately there. I'm not saying it's not going to go over. I'm not going to say that it, trees, higher cluster, read a four-foot thick tree verse or a bunker that's cost double the amount than another bunker cost or whatever it is, but I would like to see the program set up. Again, and it, it seems to work with the map. If we were able to bond the first the paths to get them done and, and, and the safety equipment. To me, that's, uh, like has to be done first. We're the only, we're the only course that has one. Sad or something. That's my initial thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Um, just to clarify before, and I, do we, what is in the current capital plan? Are the golf, are the, um, car paths in the plan right now? This is all in the plan right now. Okay, gotcha. Thank you for that. I, like I said, I normally carry my plan around with me. I don't have it. Um, Mr. Myers.
I have two questions. One about the, uh, the fees. The other one is about, um, golf carts. How, do we lease golf carts? Is that an operating expense? Okay.
Uh, we lease, we lease the golf carts. I think we have one more year on. Two more, two more years. I missed the.
Okay.
Got two more years on there and and we have, I think we have a hundred and twenty. You know, it's amazing the amount of usage. You take the roughly $400,000 a year for golf carts rental divided by the $18 per rental. You're looking at 22,000 golf cart season. Forty-nine or 50,000 rounds of golf. I mean, there's a very, very heavy usage of the golf carts. And we did, as part of our plan for next year, raise the rates by two bucks because we had fallen behind Tashua by a dollar. So but, you know, you think golf course, is that a big deal? Well, it's, it's a half a million dollar revenue for the, for the golf course. Now, you ask me, does it cover the cost? I, I don't know. I can't answer that question. The new golf cart lease was a substantial increase over prior year, but we've also gone up about four dollars a rental.
Okay. So my first question was about rates, competitive rates. So you compare yourself to Tashua? And, and how do we compare just for an 18 with a cart?
We, we have brought ourselves now up to parity with Tashua. We're, we're ahead of the wheel, I think by a buck a, a rental and comparable to Longshore.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Uh, Mr. Stark.
Really get in the weeds literally here.
We don't like the rough.
Tim Bishop and I have talked about, um, the massive amounts of invasives uh, up in, up in the Richardson area. And I noticed that as I, I walk my dog at, uh, along, along the side of the, yeah, driving range all the time. And I noticed he's actually starting to make some progress on that. Um, parts of the golf course are the same way. They're surrounded by thickets of thorns and poison ivy. And I can't imagine the golfers love it. But I'm wondering, does that kind of thing fall between the cracks because that's actually over conservation department's jurisdiction? Or is that something you think you, you guys are going to tackle as well?
I'm not sure I can answer that. I would say no. The golf course maintenance are done by the maintenance crew after golf course.
Yeah, but like on the south side of the back nine, for example, where you're up against the Grace Richardson area. I'm not really sure where the border line. Richardson area, I'm not really sure where the border line is, and that's where it's absolute worst. Like there's actual impassable. Uh, uh, tracks of vegetation through that. You literally can't get through them on foot.
I I'm sorry, I'm not sure who's in.
It's tough to think about. It would improve the whole area if a lot of that. I see.
We do have invasive species of trees up there. Know that. The game warden or tree wardens help us identify that. And that'll be part of our pre-management program.
Right. And it looks like inbounds within the golf course, you've also done some ripping up of. Patches of thorns and invasions of stuff.
Okay, we won't make note of that. Dr. Peter Grayson.
Thank you, Mr. Sir. Other questions from the board?
No, just a a comment if I might.
Sure.
Again, thanks again for the presentation and the preparation for it. The the one slide that stands out to me just prior to the end, so. The projected debt service and revenue offset. Mr. Myers, you had talked about, you know, making sure the rates were comparable to other courses. And I know you guys do that competitive analysis every year. To me, I get a lot of comfort in the in the fact that just if we were to go through with bonding all of this. That you've taken the time to look at what. Increases in rates would be needed to cover that incremental debt circus.
Right.
And to look at a dollar. Two years later, fifty cents, two years later, fifty cents. It really doesn't take a lot to pay for this. If to the extent that it's you're still competitive with your rates with the. Surrounding golf courses really says that this is an investment that the town should be making, so. I I get the most amount of comfort from this particular slide altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
I was always surprised over the last five years. Quest that. Seeking seeking a hundred thousand dollars a year during the last five years since the program ended in two thousand seventeen. It seems as though. They always go. There's other needs for stuff. Now, I understand we invested a lot of money in the clubhouse. Fair amount of money. I'm not saying, I fully understand it needed to be done. It was done and. They did a beautiful job on it, but it didn't stop the maintenance that you guys needed to happen and. I I think we got to get back on track before we start a couple of the opposite direction on the on the facility. So. We do the same hundred thousand dollars this day versus inflationary inflation. It's kind of a. Great.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay, if there's no other questions, thank you both for being here.
Thank you very much.
All right. Sorry we had you on so late, but. Okay, we are going to move on to item seven. We can sit here, consider and approve changes to the purchasing policy. Motion to hear this item, Mr. Gero, second, Mr. Penley. Thank you. Backup for this item begins on page one fifty-seven. Just as background to be public, the Board of Finance voted to adopt purchasing policy just about a year ago. And it was a substantial expansion to the previous policy that had been in place and it made some significant changes to that previous policy. Given the number of changes that were made and the fact that our purchasing director, Mr. Tulane, had not been on board for very long at that point. This board agreed that we revisit the policy again within a year. To hear from the administration as to how it was working and if any tweaks or any major changes were recommended. So that's why we're here. Mr. Tulane does have some changes, it looks like, that he'd. Like to take us through. On before we get to that, is there any public comment? Anyone online? Inside of. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Tulane, I will turn this over to you. Welcome.
Great. Thank you for having me. I did put together a very, a pretty basic. Set of slides. If you'll give me a second to share my screen. Okay. All right. Can you see this on your screen?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, so just a quick timeline as Ms. Charlton referenced. The policy was initially approved last November. We're now right at about a year. I have an asterisk there as if you might recall, technically speaking, only the first thirty-some-odd pages that. The real meat and bones of the policy were approved, but we still needed to come back with some. Formatting cleanup as well as approval of the exhibits and and appendices. So now I'm here tonight to get the the. To basically, I looked at this as having three tasks. One is doing that formatting cleanup in the section that you all approved. Incorporating the exhibits. And then a a few minor sort of, you know, living document. Suggestions that I'd like to see changed. Again, after living with this for a year, so. Just basically, I. For the task one, for that cleanup, just wanted to quickly mention, you know, I've got a finalized table of contents. That was a a real mess this time a year ago, just because. You know, the pages didn't really line up yet. And just really went through with a fine-tooth comb to make sure there was consistency of language, so not actually changing any substantive. Items, just, you know, where something might say purchasing department in one section, but purchasing authority in another, in another, just making sure that. It's consistent. Task two, again, the the exhibits and appendices. There are initially over twenty exhibits. Suggested. When Mr. Santafati had prepared the original draft for us. We've whittled that down to eleven plus a placeholder. For a a future vendor information form that has not yet been. Put together. Now, when I say we've whittled it down from twenty, that doesn't mean those. Pieces of information that Mr. Santafati felt were important are are not around anymore. They're just incorporated into other. You know, they're incorporated into other. Items at this point, they're they're, you know, non collusion, delinquent tax certification. These are all. They're all a part of our bid package now. We didn't feel it was necessary to have a a completely separate exhibit for those types of things. And then I've also added flow charts that were recommended, but were never actually incorporated into the document. So you should be able to see all those in the. The new clean. Document that I I prepared for you all. Now, in terms of living document changes, in my opinion, really pretty minor, nothing groundbreaking. I I have some. Highlights here for you. The, just to quickly go over them, in section two, I I wanted to just sort of. There is some language about performance and payment bond verification that I I felt was a little strict. And it's not that I actually disagree with it, but I I felt, you know, for the purpose of this document, let's just leave it a little bit more broad and allow for best practices. To take precedent, so just remove some wording from that section. Probably the biggest thing is the local MRO program. I I think this still needs a lot of work. I I think it's it's kind of contradictory to. The rest of the policy. So in the meantime, what I've proposed is just, there was initially some language in there that. Limited this program to single, single purchases less than five thousand dollars. And then later on in in the document, it talks about not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Over the course of a year. I I wanted to just remove that five thousand dollar single transaction limit for now and just. Mandate that. This basically follows the rest of our bid thresholds and, you know, pricing thresholds. But I do think that there needs to be additional conversation moving forward about what the intention is of. The this MRO program and how we want to support or promote local businesses. And really what the angle is there to accomplish that.
Tulane, kind of I, I just want to interrupt you for a moment. So we have a. Board members that are newer to the board and who weren't here when we approved this, and I'm not sure everyone is. Hundred percent familiar with the MRO program and what that was intended. Maybe. Back up for a second and maybe give an overview of what that is so that they can understand your comments and context.
I'll do the best I can because, to be honest, I'm. I'm not sure that I'm a hundred percent clear of what the goal is. Now. The idea here, the way it's set up currently is. For sort of, so MRO is maintenance, repair and operations and it's, the the idea here is for sort of small dollar needs. Let's. Let's promote using local vendors. Where it makes sense and and without having to go through a formal procurement process. It it's it's a good idea in theory, I think, but I I just, I think there's problems with how it's. How it's put together here. What's the definition of local? Is it? Is it Fairfield only? Is it Fairfield County? You know, so there are conversations to be had and. But yeah, it's the idea is where it makes sense, let's use just local bona fide companies. For sort of everyday needs, so that that's really the gist of it. Are there any other questions about that that I can try to answer better?
Mr. Metalla.
But but so what you're saying in this one, it it needs some more work, but you've made a recommendation for now. To change it. I think it's section I and. Or subsection I and section two. So your re- your recommendation is. Made a change, but. Need to look at this more better defined. Is that what you're saying right now?
Yes, and on my next slide, I do have, I I have like three or four items that I think. Well, along with that, though, you know. Ms. Charlton has mentioned in the past, this this should be a living document. It's not something that. Needs to be set in stone, but, you know, we've got to draw the line somewhere and just finalize the document.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yep. Okay, just again, quick. So my next item is, in section four, there's a reference. That the way it was, the way it's currently written. I believe the way I interpret it would require me to. Have bid waivers for purchases that are under the bid threshold, so items that are in within the quote threshold. That if we don't receive three quotes, I would need to technically consider or or require a bid waiver. And I felt that was a little overkill. I think that with proper, you know, effort and, you know. It should be at the discretion of the purchasing authority. Whether we can waive that requirement or, you know, really take a look at what kind of effort was made is. Did we try to get three quotes, but only two companies could respond? Does that really require a bid waiver? I just, I didn't think it was within the. The, you know, the the intention of what the bid waiver and what I'll be reporting to you all quarterly about bid, bid waivers. I didn't, I didn't think it was necessary. So I just wanted to loosen up that language a little bit. The next one, section five, bidder request for information. This is just tightening up some language to better match best practices, specifically having to do with. When we are in a bid period, if potential bidders have questions. I thought that the language was actually not restrictive enough in terms of what our best practices are for how questions should be submitted and how answers will be provided. Specifically, they need to be in writing to the purchasing department only, and then responses are given through a a formal addendum. Only. So I just, so that's an example of something I wanted to tighten up. Section eight, this is a minor one, but talks about formal contract requirements. There was some. Examples in that section of what contracts, what situations would require a contract and. One of them had to do with grant. Grant contracts, and I didn't feel that was really within the purchasing department purview, so I'm. Suggesting pulling that out, but then. Also adding language to the top of that section that that says these contract, the these are situations that require contracts, but is not limited to. Which is language we've used throughout the document elsewhere to sort of say, here's the structure, but. You know, this this isn't the only, these aren't the only items. And then the last one in section ten, there's just a a handful of minor updates. Just to better match our town terms and conditions and things like, there is an outdated number in there for prevailing wage rates, so I, you know, updating that. So really, in my view, pretty, pretty standard, just sort of best practice updates on all of these. And then. For future changes, I'll be looking to bring to you. I recently had a conversation. With town HR as well as. The first selectman's chief of staff. They want, there's a section, a pretty significant section about. The ethics code, and I guess the the town is currently putting together a new ethics code. So they, it's important. That those match. So really, the question is, how do we? How do we best do that? And I think there's already a section one point five in this document where we just sort of refer to other related town policies, and I think. It would, it would make sense to just sort of strike the lengthy section within the document and just refer. To the town's ethics code. In section one, within section one point five, but again, that's something we can talk about at a later date. Further MRO improvements, as we already discussed. There's a section, there's a part in section ten about bid protests, which is something important to me. It it's referred to in section ten, but it's not really. It it's not really outlined or or discussed anywhere else, so I do think it's a a conversation worth. Diving into further. And then just continued upgrade, you know, I cleaned up the table of contents a lot, but it's still. It's I, it's problematic. It's it's pretty lengthy. It's more of a glossary in in my opinion. So I think we could get this document down even a couple more pages. And that's really it. Again, you know, the. The proposal, the the initial proposed draft was about a hundred ten pages. We're down to eighty-seven, so. Still significant, but a nice. Nice trimming there, I think, to make it a little bit more manageable. So that's, that's about all I got. Do you have any additional questions?
Thank you, Mr. Tulane. Questions from the board? Anyone? So just to clarify, Adam, the. I was a little confused on. The comments. Versus the document, and I was trying to go back and forth, but. We don't have a red line document, I don't believe, so. And and if we're going to vote on this. I just want to make sure everyone's got clarity on. Some of your comments seem to be comments and some of them were incorporated as changes, so that's where I'm a little bit confused. I don't know if you want to speak to that. I mean, some, some of them were, I think, more obvious where you were trying to clarify language. Is there a way to, I don't know, can you just speak to that? Help us out there?
Yeah, so. The, I I have a, you know, the original Word document that was. Passed down from Mr. Santafati and went through the the purchasing policy subcommittee and. And and that was ultimately approved by the. The board last fall. It it's messy, is my first response, just because it's been through so many people, so many iterations. It it's messy, uh, is my first response, just because it's been through so many people, so many iterations. I I thought that. I I hear what you're saying. Uh, in my mind, it it made it. It was the easiest way to review this was to give you a clean copy and just go over a summary of. Um, what the changes were, but you're right, that log that I provided as backup does include a number of sort of editorial comments. Um, but basically, I was, I was hesitant to to change the document. That you all approved, um, so it was, it was sort of with. Uh, Mr. Gerber's uh input and and Mr. Becker's input that I should create this clean document. To sort of make it easier to to read um. If if you all would feel more comfortable with that red line, I can, I can get it to you.
I mean, I don't, I'm not looking to create, I just, what I wasn't clear on um was. Some of the comments, so there's, you know. Which of these comments are comments to be addressed later versus the changes are already in there, so I I tried to follow along. But I wasn't exactly sure um. Going back and forth if. All of these things you commented were incorporated or not, because I didn't have both documents side by side.
I would say the the quick answer is no, they're not, a lot of um. Really, the items that I spoke to tonight are are the. The changes that I'm I'm really proposing making from the original word document. To the PDF document that you all got tonight.
Okay, I mean, some of them are obvious, we, they say something was deleted or something was changed. But. Yeah, some of these, like, for example, I see a comment here, page ninety one, delete unnecessary. You know, so. Um, I don't, I don't know if the board had time to reread through the whole document, so I I'll just put it out to everyone else. Is anyone? Is everyone comfortable approving this based on what you've heard, or do people want to see? Something else, Mr. Metall?
I'm comfortable.
Okay. Great, anyone else have input?
I I also am comfortable and 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 trust um. Summary that was provided, however, I would say that generally speaking. Um, a red line document makes it a lot easier to get comfortable uh myself, so maybe for the next term. Um, not, not for this one, but you mentioned this is a living document and there will be future changes, um, that red line would be helpful.
Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, I I I was a little surprised there wasn't a red line, only because of the work that uh committee did. On this, we saw red line documents multiple times, every time there was any little. So, yes, seeing a comment like. I won't get into them all, but. Raise, Adam, chairwoman. It's hard to, you know, I I didn't have time to sit here and take that one document and take it through the document, crack it. Would have been nice to have seen. Tolan, do you have a version of that? Red line?
Yes, I I basically created this clean version for you guys tonight uh uh. As like a brand new document so that I, because I, like I said, I didn't want to make permanent changes. To the the. What I've been calling the Board of Finance approved version uh with red line, so I do have that red line document separately.
I mean, I am, I'm personally, I didn't hear anything during the summary that caused me any concern, so I'm.
I can't say that I didn't.
You can't say.
Can't say that I heard anything that I I was against either.
Right, so I just wanted to get a sense, if everyone's comfortable voting, we we can do that, I just wanted to make sure I I was clear. And the only thing, Adam, I, the only, this is maybe a silly thing, but. In terms of consistency with the language, I seem to recall. When we worked on this last year, purchasing department and purchasing authority was somewhat intentional. Because the purchasing authority is the first selectman versus the department. At some points, the the policy was referring to activities that would be carried out by the department, not necessarily. The first selectmen, so, but I I'm not sure that matters um. That much um.
Yeah, it wasn't like, uh, again, that was a, it was a pretty minor thing, that was just one example, um. There, there were just a couple that were out of place, there was another one, another area that talked about. Um, you know, about a procuring department when really. Oh, it had to do with funding, and so it used the term procuring department, but really, it 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 needed to be a different word. Um, you know, it had to do with the funding source rather than the procuring department, and so just little word consistency, things like that.
Okay, um, yeah, the and the only other comment I would make about the MRO thing is that was a tough one for us too, so that did not. Mr. Santafanti, that kind of got added um when your predecessor um. Took the initial draft, because the way it was presented to us is this. Think what this policy did was it memorialized practices that were already in place. Um, but were never really written down in a policy, the policy that we had before this was put together was really just a, it's like a three pager on. On a bidding policy, so there were all sorts of things that were done, which were never, which were informal. And we, that got us into a lot of trouble, obviously. So, and that MRO thing was apparently in place, but never written down anywhere, so I remember we were struggling to try and understand. How to define it and ask some of the same questions you asked, and ultimately, we got to where we got to in the last draft, but I would agree, I think. If that doesn't make sense, um, if it's not achieved, you know, I I think it's a good idea to go back and. Understand what the intended objective was, and if this is really the right way to do it, and if there needs to be more clarity, so I'm with you on that. But that's, that's just the background, that had nothing to do with Joe Santafanti, and it's not a standard part of a policy in general, so. Um, so is the board uh comfortable with moving forward with a vote on this item then? I'm I'm saying yes, okay. All right, anything else, um, Adam, that we should?
Uh, no, I would just add that, um, you know, not. I've sort of been waiting for this day so that I could actually. Uh, really take a big step forward with trainings and. Uh, it it's going to be a great opportunity for us as a purchasing department to now connect with the end user departments. Not only to sort of train them on the new policy, but we we've had this sort of. Plan in mind to to connect with them, to find out how we could better serve departments and and even do incorporate a little. Best practice training and, you know, into how you use munis and how you in- input a requisition and things like that, so I'm. This is, this will be a big uh step forward for us.
Okay, actually, just one more comment, and I'm glad you brought up the training, because I made a note to myself while you were talking. So the ethics code piece, I absolutely agree that we shouldn't. Have policies printed in multiple places, because then they could end up conflicting with each other, and when they get changed in one place, that might not care, get carried through. But I think part of the reason for putting the ethics code in the policy was to ensure that. There was training on it, as you probably know, those, some of the historical issues that led us to create this policy had to do with. You know, ethics issues, conflicts of interests, um, relationships with vendors or whatever, so I I think it's important that. That be, you know, e- even if it's just referenced in the policy. That's a critical component when this goes to end user training. Um, so I I would say, I I don't know how the ethics training is being handled in the town right now, but to the extent. There's pieces of the ethics policy, and I don't think the board is seeing in the new version. That specifically applied to purchases and relationships with vendors and all that sort of thing. Um, I I think that should be part of the training. The specific part of the training that you roll out, that is a vital aspect of this.
I agree.
Okay. All right, if there are any other comments on this, Mr. Gerber?
Just uh. Adam, thank you, and also, uh, let's remember Krista Witt. To be invited to the ribbon cutting.
Yeah, there we go.
While, while we're doing shout outs, I would also just like to shout out Courtney from the schools who put in a lot of work. Uh, Courtney Laborious put in a lot of work on this too, so.
Absolutely, and and thank you, Mr. for leadership on this, um, and we're also um. You know, being proactive, we had, we had to have a special meeting a month of, month or so ago on that one bid waiver and. Um, that was helpful and the reporting that you're providing. And that, I think, is is also very helpful to just increase transparency and and give her more confidence, so thank you again. All right, so if there's no other comments, we can take this to a vote, so all in favor of approving. The changes to the purchasing policy that are incorporated into the new document uh that was provided in the backup. Hey, it is unanimous, thank you, everyone. All right, so it is ten forty nine, and we'll get to one of the main points of this meeting, I don't. Review the town fiscal twenty five first quarter financial update. All zeros, but uh backup for this item begins on page two fifty, anything to highlight? Here, given that we have no. Were we just that good at budgeting, or what is? I see Ms. Bossy's here, welcome.
Hi.
Norm, yeah, normally, we have, we we see some variances when we're a quarter in, so maybe just give us um. A flavor for where I'm standing right now.
Sure, um, yeah, this was very unusual. Um, first time that I can really remember that it's been uh zero, I look back the last couple of years. Um. Basically, what what's, you know, the things that we always talk about, I still left on the report, the high level, just to kind of. Say, these are normally my my variants, um. The one that really stuck stuck out is the state revenue, we're not getting the the additional million, million and a half that we had for the past three years or so. Um, these are really, you know, the park and rec revenue. Um, actually, the previous gentleman, you know, talked about the golf, right? So finally, now the budget's kind of catching up. To where the actuals have been on the revenue piece for the last. You know, probably five or six years or so, so um, no, nothing really to discuss, um, reached out to the department heads. Taxes are basically uh online for where they had been the last couple of years. Um, current looks good, again, there's a tax sale budgeted for the prior and interest, so we should be hitting those numbers. Um, conveyance, building permits, fire marshal fees, all of which um. Look like the budget's going to be straight on at this point, you know, obviously, it's early. Uh, state revenue, like I said, no changes that we know of from the 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 state coming down. And uh, nothing really to report on any other major variances at this point from any of the department heads. So the revenue looks spot on, again, expenses. Um, nothing really going on on that side as well, the vacancy churn number looks to be basically where we are. Park and rec expense, again, I just left kind of those things on there that we normally talk about. Revenues on, expenses on, and no, no real variances to report as of this point. So, um, big fat zeros all the way across, um. Again, looked at the financials and and there's really nothing, nothing to report at this point.
Okay, thank you. Um, questions from the board?
Uh, we should have had her up first.
So just one, one question, um, and Mr. Walsh reminded me, we normally, we had asked to have a vacancy report as an ongoing. Of this discussion, um, we don't have that tonight, and uh. A mea culpa here, I just, I was traveling, so I didn't notice that it was missing from the backup in time, so we can talk about that at the next meeting, if that's okay. Just in general, I mean, clearly, we have vacancies, um, but we don't have. Um, anything in the estimate for it, so I'm assuming there's an offset there. And I don't know if you want to briefly touch on that now, or if you want to revisit that in more detail at our next meeting, but we should talk about that.
Yes, we did start to prepare vacancy reports similar to the last one, um, and uh, we actually wanted to. It didn't go in the packet because we're actually working on. You know, some adjustments into it and. In the end, it should have been circulated, so we apologize for that, but. Would like to bring that.
Number meeting, okay.
Wanted to quantify it better with dollars and and whatnot, uh, but we do anticipate at this point that it's that it's netting itself out.
Be a wash, okay, Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, well, that's supposed to be presented in every quarter. It's not like you get to pick the month that you guys prepare it, it's supposed to be presented every quarter, we discuss that. Surprised, kind of shocked that it wasn't here, so in the future, it's going to have to be presented, I mean, it might, the rest of the board. Supposed to be presented.
Buy a list of vacancies and send it, so if you, so in the interest of attempting to actually quantify some of that with dollars. And also show where it's netting out to actually be zero, even though there are, you know, at least seven or eight vacancies. Um, we we were, the only delay and the only reason it didn't go into the packet initially. Was we felt we actually wanted to add more, so in an attempt to add more, we ended up with nothing, and we apologize.
So we will.
So, send you the list, but we wanted to actually put some dollar amounts to it. If you were the last one, it certainly left.
So Caitlin, there's no um. The vacancies, you go look at them, and you look at how you normally put them together, and there, the variance is exactly zero.
The variance between departments overall right now is is basically zero.
Okay. We, from what I understand, our successor now partially works his week in Trumbull, is that correct?
He works.
Two days there, from what I'm hearing from people at.
Eight hour a week, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we rent him out, correct?
But um, he's still working, oh, yeah, um. He's got an agreement with them, but I I I believe he's working full time here as well.
Working here, even though he's not working full time hours here, he still gets his full benefits, is still full salary. And he counts as a full time employee here, although he's doing eight of his hours a week for the town of Trump.
He's still working all his hours here, plus eight hours a week in in Trumbull.
So this is a different job?
So he's helping them out, he's like, helping them through a tough time. Yeah, which I I I guess people have done that for us before, I didn't, I didn't know this was a thing. But um, it's fairly fairly common, I guess, when. When, when, um, what'd you say? It's fair, it's fairly common, from what I understand, that if if a town is in. Uh, dire straits, that another town might help them out for a period of time.
Can we get a list for the last ten years of how many positions our department heads have worked for other towns and communities?
I probably zero, I mean, I I I don't.
That was fairly common.
From other towns. I mean, I I, you want me to spend my time getting a survey, I mean, I just asked around and said, yeah, you know, people's uh. In, in our HR department, said, yeah, this, we did this, went over in this other town or that other town, I don't. Think uh that it's worth spending a ton of time, but if you, if you want me to, I can go out and do a search.
What, I mean, week does, what day or days, because I'm hearing it's two days a week. Uh, what days or day of the week does he work for the town of Trumbull?
I don't, um, it's it's eight hours total, so I assume it's flexible. For him.
Okay.
I mean, he lives in Trumbull.
He leaves the town of Fairfield during business hours, or is he here?
Lives in Trumbull, so I I believe.
Asking whether, I'm asking whether he leaves our employment between the hours of. Eight or eight thirty to four thirty approximately, does he, does he ever work up there during our business hours?
Um, I assume he's there some hours when they're in the office, but.
He's doing less work for us during those period, that period of time.
I assume during that period during the day.
They're paying us.
Yeah, it's a contract.
Oh, we have a contract, okay, the Board of Finance, get that contract, please. Okay. Could you send us the contract to Board Finance?
And the Board of Selectmen approved the contract?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And where's that revenue, Caitlin, popping up in our, in in the documents? From what line item in revenue is it popping up? I don't see, I don't see a line for it.
Was it in place during the first time, the agreement?
It's pretty recent.
Okay, so it may not be in the, okay.
And where will it, so it's not in here? And where will it? So it's not in here? That's the correct question.
I don't believe we've received, or at least Finance hasn't received a check from the town of Trumbull quite yet.
Didn't get approved until September, so.
Well, it's November. It's almost November 5th.
But this is. First quarter report, so it ends on September 30th.
So you'll be setting up a revenue line item like assessor rental fee? What, where's that going to show up?
I, I don't know if it's going to be a separate one. It depends on the amount. There is a lot of miscellaneous revenue line items. Almost every department has one. So I could see if the assessor has, has a miscellaneous revenue line item.
I didn't see one when I went through it. I went through the whole, every revenue line item.
I mean, it could, it could be in there. If it's not budgeted and it's zero, it wouldn't print on the report.
Okay. All right. If you can get back to us on what line item that's going to be on.
Sure.
Because we obviously can do without an assessor for one day a week. And is there an end date to this?
Uh, yeah.
Over by December 31st?
It's a limit. Um, no, I, I can't recall.
All right. Well, this.
It's, it's a limited period.
Okay. Are there plans to rent out other department heads?
Oh yeah, we're gonna rent out all of them.
Great. I love hearing that they can work part time. This is great. We might have.
This, this is, this is a special circumstance because the town of trouble was desperate and they asked him, he lives there and we're desperate that we've, we've. This is.
This, well, we have a desperate need for CFO. So maybe we could rent Trumbull's.
I don't know if I, I don't know who it is, but if, you know, if we can do a swap.
Yeah. Back to us of what they think about that. I have questions. Since there was all zeros, I just have some questions and feeling it might be timing issues. I try to limit my questions on the specific ones, but have you gone over the general taxes compared to the percentages on where we stand on a percentage basis? For say like last year, are these about the same?
Yes. So I have that. Um, the only difference is going to be, don't forget the motor vehicle. We're in one, one installment now.
Yeah, people seem to love that.
So that's going to be a change. So real estate, we're at 50%, 50.71%. Last year, we were at 50.86%. Motor vehicles, like I said, is vastly higher than last year. We're at 93.63%. Last year, we were at 74.57%. And personal property, we're at 56.98 and last year we were at 56.48. So we're right in line with where we were last year in terms of our tax revenue.
Okay. Under licenses and permits, under count numbers says zero, one, zero, zero, five. For building. It says that we were at an original estimate of our budgeted amount was of revenue was $1.9 million. And we've already brought in, in the first quarter, $827,560. So we've brought in, in building revenue, 43.6% of the budget in the first three months.
Yeah.
Is that normal or is that going to continue? Cause to me that looks like there, there would be a, a variance coming to the positive.
Well, a lot of the building permit revenue, you know, we're not on an accrual basis. It's, 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 it's a cash basis. If you get one of these schools and they get, and they get a building permit, that's two days from September 30 to October 2nd, that throws off that percentage year to year. Um, I did speak with the building official. He was, you know, this budget line's gone up, so he feels comfortable and confident that he's going to hit it. But as of now, he said he's going to be right on budget.
Okay. Just seems like building in this town is going on year round and to get 44 point, 43.6% of your revenue in three months seems, and I, I'm not doubting that. Yes, a university can come in with a huge number. Um, it just seems like we'll be well over on that number.
I mean, I, I agreed, but some of these big projects could get tied up in TPZ, you know, so it's, it's very hard for him to say. We've seen a lot of the, the regulars, the, the schools, the apartments and stuff come, come, come through, came through early. But again, he's, he was skeptical to say he was going to be any, any variance to budget at this point in time.
Okay. And same thing on electric, cause they're getting closer to almost 50% of what they were supposed to make for the year in the first three months.
Yep. Yeah, I know. I, I, I went over these numbers with him and he was like, you know, give me till second quarter. I'm going to have a better handle on the year. But as of now, he, he's comfortable with just leaving it at the budget.
Okay. Uh, let's see. The next one is. You speak to the town clerk about the advance taxes. Are we normally at 34% or around there for the year?
Um, we're actually a little bit further. We were behind last year's number. So because they did end up slightly over last year, as you know. So she said, um, you know, it's far, it's just too early to estimate the year based on one quarter, but if the rates come down, you know, it's definitely going to help her numbers.
Okay. Uh, and then go to on page four of the revenue numbers. It's under miscellaneous. Can you explain the miscellaneous fees and revenue made to your department? Or that puts us $241,279,000 where we have a variance of 663%?
Yes, that's a, that's a, it's, that's a timing issue. What we do is we, there's some rebates that we get from express scripts and we don't know the breakout from active and retirees for a month later. So we place it here so that our cash reconciliation works. And then when we do get the detail, Juliana will then make a reclass entry out of here and into the appropriate pocket.
So is this revenue we've actually received from express scripts?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that for the whole year or is that?
No, that's quarterly, but that goes into the medical. It's related to medical and the OPEB trusts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Under rents, the line item. Rental income and a line that's 42, 512, where it looks like we are more than about 45%. We received the rent for. Is that just a timing issue for something that's only rented where we take that rentals in the first three months of the, of the year, most of it? And then it's like something now at the beach?
Some are seasonal, some rents come in, you know, sometimes they pay for the full year. Sometimes they pay for the half year. Sometimes they pay quarterly. So every rent is a little bit different. Um, I could look into see what that one is and get back to you if you want.
Okay. Thank you. If you could do that. Under administrative services.
Are you on expenses now?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm on page two of expenses. The part time payroll for administrative services has been completely expended. What is that for? The part time payroll that would be spent all of just three months?
I, well, there's actually no budget there if you're looking at the same one that I am.
I'm looking at part time payroll. It's, I guess, object number 51, 030?
Yeah, there's no budget, right?
There's no budget. It's just an expended amount. What was?
I believe, I believe there's someone in the first selectman's office, the, one of the part timers, I believe is, um, I'm not sure who it is, but it's hitting administrative services. Cause the previous part timer for the first select moment hit there as well. She had a part timer that hit administrative services as well.
And why was there no budget for it?
Well, by the time that this budget came to be, I don't think there was one for the previous administration either.
Okay. And do you know what was spent the previous year?
Um, I could find out.
Okay. If you can get back to us about that. And then rental and storage number in that same area for administrative services, object 53.
Those are, those are copier costs that get allocated out to the department, but it first hits because they're in charge of the copiers. So they have to fund the copiers and then when we get reports, we, we, we allocate them out to the departments.
Okay. So that's why there's such a variance. Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Can I ask Mr. Walsh quickly? Can you go back to the administrative services? With the 56, 178, is that what you're talking about?
Oh, 30.
What, what, what page are you?
On page two of the expenses.
Page two, but it's not fully expended. It's encumbered.
Not encumbered. No, the first line, if you were asking me about the first line I spoke about.
Is that what you're asking?
Asking about that top. There's no budget for it.
The budget of 76, 876?
The part time payroll line?
No, go up. You're in register our voters bill. Go up to admin services. Go up one.
Oh, admin.
Admin services.
31.
It's gotta be Bill. It's wrong. That was all, that whole amount was transferred off. So yeah.
Thought so.
Yeah. No, you're right. Yeah.
It's hitting the wrong account?
It's. Because everything from that was dollar for dollar transferred.
Okay. Okay. And all right, on page five, under legal services, there's an $850,000 budget. Year to date expend was 150,205. Why is $329,900 encumbered? Leaving a budget of $370,000.
We, we put blanket purchase orders in for the legal firms that we know about, that we're going to be paying throughout the year. And we used last year or we estimate how much we're going to pay them. So that's what those encumbrances would entail. So don't forget, a lot of the legal services are always a month lag. So this is probably two months worth of actuals, not three in the, the 150.
Okay. But in the budget, was the UI expenses supposed to be part of the budget for the 850?
I, I believe the UI expenses are in there because I believe Conan Wolf's doing the work, but Bill and Dave probably know better than I do.
Yeah, it should be in there.
Okay. And that work's still ongoing?
It is. They're going to be arguing, um, the appeal in January.
Okay. In the retiree benefits, and I think this, you just have to explain it to me because I don't, I don't, I just don't understand it in the, um, page five, it's well down below. Clearly I understand why you, why you, why we've expended some of them 100% right away. But I don't understand why the others are not. So if you just kind of walk me through, like for example, life insurance. Are we just waiting to get an invoice or we pay them monthly?
Life insurance, we pay monthly.
Okay.
But the, but the ones that say OPEB and retirement contribution, the ones that are fully expended are the funding sources for the OPEB trust and the pension trust. So those get expensed once a year and it gets moved over to the pension and the OPEB trusts.
Okay. And then if you go down lower, there's three retirement contribution lines. Two of them, we fully, the larger ones for 3 million and 7 million, we fully expended. But then there's a third one that's only partially expended. It looks like we're paying that monthly.
Those are the 401 contributions that happen with every payroll.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the long-term disability, do we just pay on a monthly basis?
Correct.
Is that why? Okay. Then in human resources on page six. These are just the part time and overtime earnings. There's no budget for them. These are just overtime and part time payroll that are just being paid by that department. On lines five, oh, 51030 and 51050?
Yes.
And then the, the whole section where we pay other outside, the outside, how we call them, charities and non-for-profits. Some of them seem like we pay them like immediately 100% of the money. Is that because they send you an invoice for that money? And then others seem to be like 25%, like we're paying them quarterly.
There's, there's two that are quarterly. The rest are once a year because the amounts are so small.
Okay. All right. Now get, get into your department and page 10 of finance. I've seen what the budget is and that you, what you've paid and what you've encumbered. But why is that budget going to be over 10%? Why is it already after the first quarter? You're predicting that there's going to be a 10% variance of $103,685.99. Has there been another position or anything added onto your, into your department?
So those are for a couple of the new hires, the program managers, I think is what we're calling them.
What program managers?
Practical insurance.
Project manager. Sorry.
Let's talk, let's talk about that for a second. I thought there was going to be a specific department for that. That comes under David U as chief operating officer. Is there not?
There, there will be. We, we haven't.
Why is it being set up as a department now since these people are going to be in that department? You've got a position. And why hasn't that been set up?
I mean, we, we should do that. We, we just.
We, should we do?
We should do that here. I mean, we should be moving, if we need to move money in, we should.
No, I'm, I'm just saying why they didn't do it. We.
I'm not sure.
We don't have, we didn't do the budget that way. So you.
We didn't. So the people are, I thought they were being, I thought they were being paid under their original budgeted areas. I mean, people sort of, Eli is, is now reporting to David, but he's still within the engineering.
Yeah. So I guess the question I have is why aren't we moving money out of, like for Eli, for example, moving money out of transferring money out of engineering and into this new department for him? And even I don't know where you're paid. I think your CFO, your COO, I, it's like, I, I don't know if that's going to be moved into that department or not. But.
Probably paid out of the CFO line and below the budget.
Below the budget in amount. Yeah. And what, but is there going to be other people in this department other than Eli? And this woman who's there who is supposed to be another woman, and I guess she quit over this whole thing and whatever. But is she, she, she should be deducted out of the WPCA, correct? And we should be transferring that money over into this department.
Correct. One of them can be billed against, there's a full FTE and CAA for one.
Yeah, but I think we should properly budget for this because we have a budget here coming up.
Yeah.
And. What would be involved in doing that?
Um, it, I, I not 100% sure yet.
I think we'd like to, we'd like to come in one, we'd like to come and do that in one shot and not have to come back.
You're doing it in December?
I think probably more like a January timeframe.
Okay.
And so we haven't come and asked for that yet. The goal, um, and, and I think you said this numerous times, is to ultimately it comes close to netting out as the organization for, for transfers. So if we did that near term and asked for it, you know, fully having a, a goal, you know, plan to be able to. Yeah, um, you know, fully having a, a goal, you know, plan to be able to present and. We are to net that against.
Sure.
Could potentially ask for a higher headcount overall than where we went on, on landing. So we wanna try to find out, you know, sort out where our savings are gonna be and come in one. You know, one plan and. So.
Okay.
Again, I don't think December, but.
Would the Board of Finance be able to get um? I don't know, I call it a corporate tree. Of when you started, Bill, from the first day that you, that you inherited. To where it is like today. Like these new positions, this new department. Cause it's getting kind of confusing, cause I, it's like. You know, it's. You've changed a couple of things, and I'm not saying you don't have the right to do it. But, you know, we're heading into budget season and I'm getting extremely confused. About these people, like, so I would like to be able to see a comparison of the two, does that, does that exist in the town?
Well, um, in, in terms of the number of people, un, like, the, the departments and the department heads, yes. Um, the whole um. Uh, movement to Paycom has sort of highlighted some major issues in. The, the next levels down and, and where like workers report to, like there were, there's a lot of confusion. In some instances, you know. Even how many people were under, under some of the supervisors, so. Uh, in terms of the department head, I mean, this is all getting fleshed out in the Paycom tree. Um, for the first time, it was not fleshed out in uh Munis. So. I can't, uh, we, we can't yet, or probably won't be able to compare the old. Full, like, all the head count of, of town. Uh, but we can do the department, sure, I mean, the only major changes. Um, in reality are David, um, and this project management. Um, role under David. Um, and um. I guess WPCF having the, well, not really, I mean, the, the plant manager, I think on paper, it showed that, that, um. The PCF reported to Bucky, even though in the past they actually didn't, but um. I think on paper it did, so there's not really a change there. So it's really the one, the one.
Engineering will have one less person. So that, that'll be a change. Obviously, in the WPCF, however you put, wherever you put that, whether it's under, under.
That's.
W or, or not, one less person.
Um.
Well, WPCF is.
Well, how we charge, yeah.
Just, um, so it sounds like in next year's budget, you're planning on making some structural changes. But you've already started moving some of those people around now, so between now and the budget. And maybe some of this comes out during the vacancy report, but before, before the next budget. Season starts. Sort of a, I mean, maybe a preview of that, like, okay, this is what's gonna be incorporated in the next budget that we've already done. Cause it sounds like some of these, these moves have already been made, is that?
Yeah, I, what I'm saying is.
We're gonna get transparency.
We're heading into a budget season in sixty days, right?
Understood, yeah.
And. It's gonna be difficult to review a budget from one year to the next. I'd like to see a corporate tree of every department, every position. Paired to what it was. So then when I'm looking at the headcount, I can compare it against where it was before and where people are now. Cause there might be things I don't even know about, there may be. I'm not saying you're, you're, you're hiding it from me, but there may be things I don't even know about, they're just things I know about.
But can I just, so Jim, in the, in the budget process, right, for every department, we do have a comparative analysis of positions, right? We have every position listed current year and prior year. And when there's a difference, usually that becomes obvious, and in the narrative, it'll say, you know. The headcount's down, but it's not really down, it's down because this position, you know, this part-time secretary that used to be here is now over there. So. That, I, I think we do have a comparison mechanism in the budget, but if there are broader. I'll, I'll call them structural changes or reorganization things, or however you wanna frame it. Um. You know, Brenda had some of that in the beginning of her man, and she laid it.
She admitted it.
Exactly, and I think that's what you're saying, so I, exactly, so either that would happen. As a prelude to the budget process, or I think, I think what you're asking is, before we get there, to the extent some of these things have already occurred. To lay that out.
It should be being done now, to be honest with you, when it's, when it's occurring, I mean, we, we agreed that there's obviously. I guess there might be positions moving, but there's no additional dollars, like they're not hiring another engineer or whatever Eli was. Because clearly that would be additional money that they should have to tell the, the Board of Finance about and us vote on it before that ever happened. So I know that's not happening. And I know the WPCF person's not being replaced, the, the woman who's.
There's it.
Came over, because they would have to come back to us for that, cause there'd be not enough money in the budget.
No, exactly, and one of the things we talked about, and I think I, I said this until, I know at one point Bill got aggravated with me. Continuing to say, we had, no, during the budget was that. We, you, you talked to um. A lot about the fact that, you know, you were kind of getting your feet wet, beginning of last budget process, things were gonna change, we weren't really sure, you knew you needed. You were gonna need certain resources in some areas, but you didn't have all that fleshed out yet. So you, you kind of, and I kept saying, don't be surprised, don't be surprised, everybody, if the administration comes back midstream. And asks for more money out of surplus or whatever, so yes, they're making transfers, yes, you may come back and ask us for mid-year, but, but.
Some of this is where people are sitting.
Exactly.
So, for example, WPCF, um, it's an engineer that was sitting over there.
Yeah.
And, you know, one of our issues was, we never saw her, right, so we moved her over and she didn't like that, so she, she left. Um, but the new um engineer that, that came in is sitting in at head office, or at, at Town Hall. Um, but they're still working on WPCF projects, so it is their location, who they interact with, uh. But.
And, and I guess what I'm trying to say, and in relation to Jim's question, if people are moving around, you can provide a summary to that, maybe when you. Present the make vacancy report, that's the opportunity to do that, and if we're literally adding people that were not budgeted. Um, we kind of knew that might happen, depending on some of the issues that you told us about at the beginning of the budget process, but in that case. You would have to come back and ask for a transfer, and that hasn't happened.
It hasn't happened.
And I, the reason we know that necessity is not there is because we have this first quarter report that's basically telling us. Thus far. According to what Caitlin's showing us, everything is netting out. So any, any adds and subtracts are netting and.
And in some of the positions like project managers, they sat vacant, even in a funded position for it.
Done.
I have other positions that are completely vacant that. You know.
So December or January, we can get a summary of kind of what's occurred, and then when you present your budget, you'll have an opening. Presentation like you always do of the changes, which would include headcount increases, decreases by department. Or anything else, and then in terms of department by department, I'm hoping the budget book will have the same information, it's always had with the comparative number. Although it's kind of, you're saying that, were those numbers not always correct and you found that, cause it.
Well, that was.
Yeah, those numbers are, are uh great, and you know, when you, when you get down. When we've gotten down into trying to figure out where people are and people work for, where it's, it's been a process. Moving them into Paycom has had to clarify who reports to them, so, you know, it's um. It's been interesting, but it'll be codified going forward, or. I don't know if that's a right word.
No, that's.
It'll be in the books.
Okay. Um. Caitlin, back to the expenses on page thirteen, under fire. Um. Object five one oh six four, uh overtime earnings slash BUS, I don't know what BUS stands for. But uh, they've seemed to expense, they, they had a budget of five hundred and sixteen thousand, five eighty-seven. And they've spent forty-four and a half percent of that. All in one quarter. Is this, what, what, number one, what's this line for, this overtime? And two. Does this not look like it's tracking uh gonna be above?
Um. I think it's for business leave, I think that's what the, it's shortened for, so there has to be coverage if, if someone has to go. And do some business. As a firefighter somewhere else, but someone has to cover for them. Um, these are all, I normally look at all their overtime accounts together. Because they're related and, and it's kind of hard to say one line versus the other. Um, and. I'm gonna say a lot of it is seasonal, a lot of people take vacation, right, in the, in the summer months. So you have some, some July and August on here, so they normally trend higher the first quarter. And then it normally goes down the next two, and then it goes up again. So that's normally how these overtime accounts have been trending over the past five or six years, I work closely with Kieran on this. So normally the first quarter is high.
Well, I understand on vacation time, cause it's summertime, people wanna take vacation.
Right.
But I don't understand if it's a bit, what's its business purpose? It seems to be forty-four and a half percent is spent in the first quarter. Are there like all these seminars going on that everyone's going to? Where we're spending two hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
Um, I can get detail on it, again, I normally look at these in total. Um, so, and you can see the other ones are way under, you know, the twenty-five percent, so it's, so I normally look in total and. I could see if Kieran sent me anything, he's normally pretty good, but um, again. Seasonal, a lot of it's gonna just um flush itself out over the course of the year.
Um, all right. Are you looking to see whether he sent you anything?
Yeah, I think he did, I don't know if he, if that line itself was addressed, so I'll have to just um. See. Um, okay.
Fifty no, okay, we have one, we have one voting item left, but.
Sure you'll pass it without me.
Okay. Yeah, can we, um, I think, let's try to move this along, I mean, this is only the first quarter here, so. Obviously, all these projections are gonna change, um. Anything else?
Um, yeah, just quickly, I found a little blurb on this, it is business leave, major drivers were intensive work on public safety, radio project. Records and management implementation, master mechanics overtime due to a retirement of a mechanic until position was filled on nine thirty.
Okay, cause he, did he say anything about, he thinks it will still come in on time?
Yes.
Budgets?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And on the police, the part-time payroll line, object fifty-one oh four oh. Part-time payroll, they've also expended forty-seven, six percent. They explain why that was?
Um, I could look, but again, I think that's seasonal as well. But I could, um, I could follow up, I don't know that I have that account.
Get that, if you don't mind, just get that to our chair, and she'll, she'll send it to us. Uh, let's see. There's a line um on page seventeen, under Public Works Operations. And it's object number. Fifty-four, three ten, meaning slash repair, EQU.
Equipment.
That seems to be two hundred and twenty-seven percent over.
Well, that's due to the encumbrance, if you look at the actual, I normally, it, it, there, it's only six thousand spent.
Okay, so.
So there's a, there's a PO for um equipment, and I'm not sure, you know. A lot of the maintenance um. Accounts we kind of look at together as well. Um, but only six thousand has been spent of the twenty-two, so that's really more in line with the quarterly expense. So possibly the PO, maybe we hit that maintenance line and maybe it should have been a different one.
Different PO line.
Okay.
Different maintenance.
Okay.
This, this is kind of a really unusual, almost done?
It's also, uh.
You almost done, answer my question.
I already said I was, John.
Hurry up. Don't tell me, yeah, I'm telling you to.
No, you're not.
Ridiculous.
Why you think you're such a bully?
Bully.
Christ.
I don't think you've ever asked questions like this, it's on a, on a.
I've never.
Quarterly that has zero, zero zeros, you ask questions.
Thing that said zeros before either, twenty.
Oh, it's, it's so different.
The Purple Woods Library, the payroll's over about ten percent. On page twenty-one.
I believe that, oh, wait, are you talking about the regular payroll?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think that there's someone hitting there that should be in the, if you flip the page for um the other way. Their, their regular payroll in the main is a little bit under.
Okay, so some part of that's just not hitting the right line?
Yeah, I think someone's hitting the woods and it should be um it's main.
Okay. Um, that's it, I appreciate you going through it with me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Welsh, any other? Okay, we have one, one quick voting item here, so I'm gonna move on to um item nine. Uh, this is to hear consider enact upon the following transfer, hydrate and water one hundred thousand. To transfer out to debt service one hundred thousand dollars, so to clarify, this is for this gold twenty-four. Uh, motion here to this item. Um, Ms. Rogero, seconded by Mr. Curly. So there's some backup for this item on page two eighty-three, just his background here, um. This, this voting item is necessary as a small fix. Uh, to the vote we took at our last meeting where we transferred. Our revenue and expense surpluses uh for the year, the debt service fund. So it turns out the way we worded our resolutions, probably my fault, was not quite right, because there's a small part of our surplus. Um, hundred thousand dollars. That, that gets us to the eleven point seven five percent fund balance. Um, that arose from lapsed encumbrances, it was basically old purchase orders that were canceled. And uh, the way that lapsed encumbrances are treated in governmental accounting is a little quirky. Since they relate to a prior year and there's no appropriation in the budget for that spending. Uh, cause the appropriation was in the prior year budget, they, they get accounted for as a revenue item and rather than a reduction of expense. Like they would in normal gap accounting. So, long story short, according to Joe Centafanti, to get this right in our financial statements and to make sure we keep our fund balance steady. And don't add a hundred thousand more than we want to. Um, we need to reflect the transfer shown in this agenda item. Again, otherwise, we'll, we'll end up with a hundred thousand too much in our fund balance calculation. Uh, so, you know. Once again, based on discussion with our auditor, and if we approve this item, we will do what we intended to do during the last meeting. Um, I don't think there's any public comment on this, um Caitlin, do you have anything to add? Did I get that right?
Yeah, no, um, if, if we didn't do this transfer, it would go up to eleven point seven nine, it's three basis points different, so it's just really. I don't want to call it administrative, but we just need this to make it flat at the eleven point seven six percent.
This, this gets us to what we intended.
Yes.
Um, any questions? Okay, all in favor of approving the transfer set forth in item nine, please raise your hand. Okay, it's unanimous eight zero, item ten, to hear, consider and act upon any communications. Anything? Okay, I'll just say we had our fund balance subcommittee before this, had a healthy discussion, so if anything was clear. Update you, um, or you can watch the meeting, uh, motion to adjourn, item eleven, Mr. Penley.